I don't know. I'm not sure. I, I don't know.
Please take your seats, we're going to get started. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, October the 25th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our council chamber audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. The council mics are open. Please call them.
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Graeb, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Regenbach, Councilmember Ruckregel, and Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a court and present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that we have several special meetings coming up. Next Tuesday, November 1st, we have a special meeting regarding the revised annual budget. That's at 6:00 PM next Tuesday. Following that, we have a regular council meeting, but also a public hearing regarding an annexation of a parcel that, that evening at 6:00. Following that, on Tuesday, November the 15th, we have a special meeting of the Peoria City Council regarding the 2023 revised annual budget. Please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at the minutes.
Do we need separate for those two sets of minutes?
No, no, one motion would suffice.
Thank you. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting and the joint city council meeting and town board meeting held on October 11th, 2022, as printed.
May I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
We have one town item. 22-352 is a communication from the town supervisor and town clerk with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Peoria for the sharing of services and staff. And on your desk, there is a handout with an agreement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Graeb?
Thank you very much. Perhaps we could get an overview from our city clerk or township supervisor on what this does to make things more efficient, streamlining our operation. Clerk Tar, would you like to do that?
Sure, of course, Councilman.
I'm sure closer to the microphone right now.
Sure. So what this will do is this will share services between the town and the city. It will do town duties in regards to agendas and minutes and preservation of those documents. And then on the city side, it'll work towards preservation of the city documents. And it will share the cost and the services of both.
Supervisor Larry, would you like to make some comments as well?
Just to simply echo what the Madam Town Clerk slash City Clerk has said, it's just, basically, we're just going to be, it's formalizing a role that has already been set in place in her, her office. She has more of an idea of what's going on, so, you know, the Madam Clerk and I both collaborated on this agreement, and we felt that this is the best solution for both the town and the city of Peoria.
So it's been somewhat de facto, this is just codifying it?
Yes.
I move for approval.
Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the city agenda. We have public hearing. 22-353 is a public hearing regarding the 2023 revised budget.
I was notified that we didn't properly notice this item to the public, so I would request a motion to defer this for two weeks. Moved by Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 22-354 is a communication from the mayor and corporation counsel with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 22-355 is a communication with a request to accept a grant from FEMA for the 2021 staffing and adequate fire and emergency response grant in the amount of $4,91,208. 22-356 is a communication with a request to authorize the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the city of Peoria and the United Association of Steamfitters Local Union 353 from December 1, 2022 through November 30th, 2025. 22-357 is a communication with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the town of the city of Peoria for the sharing of services and staff, and there is a handout with an updated agreement on your desk. 22-358 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request for the following. A, to approve and authorize the purchase of design and specifications for the Welcome to Peoria sign in the amount of $3,000 from IDG Architects for the Southern Gateway Improvement Project. And B, approve a sole source agreement with Zendavor Sign &amp; Graphics Inc. for the installation of the Welcome to Peoria sign in the amount of $24,109.14 for the Southern Gateway Improvement Project. 22-359 is a communication with requests to approve a three, three-year contracts with Her Petroleum Oil for large loads tanker and Agland FS for small loads transport. 22-360 is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request for the following. A, to accept the fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance of the Department of Justice in the amount of $84,855. B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2022/2023 biennial budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding and the Bureau of Justice Assistance providing the fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $84,855. C, to approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and the county of Peoria under the fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $35,639. And D, approve the distribution of funds to pay a portion of the LYNCO Bearcat in the amount of $49,216 with fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant funds. 22-361 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 2724 West Newman Parkway. 22-362 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance amending a special, existing special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a legal non-conforming recreational facility to add a freestanding sign for the property located at 7,000 North Fleming Lane, commonly known as the Greater Peoria Family YMCA. 22-363 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Liquor Commission with a request to concur of Arius Hanwano. 22-364 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Courtney Lee. 22-365 is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class B1 restaurant 25% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Empire Lounge LLC 3033 North Sterling contingent upon the issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. And 22-366 is to approve the committee report policy session from the October 11th, 2022 Special City Council Meeting Regarding the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. 22-356.
Councilmember Graeb?
22-355.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 22, 3, 61, and 22, 3, 65.
Councilmember Velpula?
22, 358, please.
350?
358.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve all the other items? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-355 is a communication from the city manager and fire chief to accept a grant from FEMA for the 2021 staffing and adequate fire and emergency response grants in the amount of $4,91,208.
Councilmember Graeb?
Well, I feel like we've emerged from one heck of a storm as relates to our efforts in the city to fund properly our fire rescue services. And those of us who are fortunate enough to be at the unveiling of the Edward B. Gaines Jr. news station house four heard our chief, Solberger, comment on this particular safer grant. And Chief, could you come on up to the lectern there? This grant does represent one of the largest grants ever awarded, certainly since 2015 to any municipality. And could you elaborate a little bit on what this means for safety for the people of Peoria?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. It's been a long day. What this means to us is we were tasked when Chief Bachman was here, working with the city manager on creative ways that we can try to secure some funding. We knew that this was a possibility. FEMA had announced through the Homeland Security that they were increasing their funds. So as the grant manager, I took the opportunity to work with a grant writer. And so what this means to us as a department and what this means to the South Side and Battalion One is what we refer to it, and that's most of our companies from downtown to the southern portion of Peoria. It establishes much-needed water supply at Engine Two and Station Eight. Now, that being said, January 1st, working with the city manager, it was already in place with overtime funds. And what that has done is it has tasked our fire department and tasked our firefighters. And so this is a much-needed grant, providing us security for 11 firefighters for three years.
So we don't have to have brownouts in terms of staffing, as was happening before.
Correct.
This is huge, and I, I know that I join my colleagues in expressing our appreciation for all the work you and everyone else did on this to make it a reality, and all the work Mayor Ali's done on it as well. Thank you very much, and I move to accept that grant from FEMA for the 21 staffing and adequate fire and emergency response grant in the amount of $4,91,208.
There's a second, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Other discussion? Manager Urick?
Just real quick, I just wanted to point out, if you look at the council communication, the salary cost is 1.9 million, and the benefit cost is 2.1 million. So our pension costs and contributions are fully funded for this, this period of time as well.
Wonderful, wonderful. Please cast your ballots.
Thanks, Chief.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
22-356 is a communication from the city manager and director of human resources with a request to authorize the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the city of Peoria and the United Association of Steamfitters Local Union 353 from December 1, 2022 through November 30th, 2025.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just pulled up to vote no with consistency with my other votes on contracts due to residency. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Euler. Madam Clerk?
22-358 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request for the following. A, approve and authorize a purchase of design and specifications for the Welcome to Peoria sign in the amount of $3,000 from IDG Architects for the Southern Gateway Improvement Project. And B, approve a sole source agreement with Zendavor Sign &amp; Graphics Inc. for the installation of the Welcome to Peoria sign in the amount of $24,109.14 for the Southern Gateway Improvement Project, and we will need two separate votes on this item.
Okay. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Personally, I feel it's a first step in the branding of city, but I just have one clarification question. So the court says that, you know, there's a, there's a, we are, we are agreeing on $24,109, but what is the timeline for the completion of this project?
This year. That's why we're trying to get this through. We want it in place this year.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move to, I move to approve 358A and B.
Okay, we got to do one at a time.
Okay, I move to approv, approve 22-358A.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson.
And then...
Discussion on item A. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Velpula?
I move to approve 22-358B.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion on B? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-361 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 2724 West Newman Parkway.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to have two additional weeks to finish conversations with some of the residents who had questions about this. So if we could, I'd like to at least...
Do you want to move for deferral for two weeks?
Yes, I'd like to move to defer item number 22, 361 for two weeks.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any additional discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-365 is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to approve the site application for a Class B1 restaurant 25% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Empire Lounge LLC 3033 North Sterling contingent upon the issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I will not support this. As I had shared with one of my colleagues, I have had concerns. I've been notified by people subdivision, who live in subdivisions as well as neighborhood associations, who are opposed to the approval of liquor for this establishment for the reasons they stated. And Madam Mayor, there, while there are already existing places where people, in that area, where people can go to for liquor and other amenities similar to what this application is requesting, so I must respectfully deny approval for this application site for liquor.
So...
I move to deny.
Move to deny?
Yes.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion fails with five yays and six nays. We're still on this item. Is there a motion to approve? Let me get a clarification. Mr. Hayes? Council Hayes? Does that mean it's approved?
No. I think it'd be in order to solicit the motion to approve as you have.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You voted the opposite way of that.
Oh, I didn't look at that. Okay, so I'm going to ask our legal counsel, Madam Clerk, how we're going to handle her vote. You mistakenly voted. You moved to deny, but you, you clicked no rather than yes.
Your Honor? Since Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jackson voted with the majority, she's entitled to move to reconsider. So she was on the successful side of it.
Okay.
So she could motion reconsider.
Can it be done at this meeting?
Yeah. I, I think your rules allow the motion reconsider at this meeting or at the next meeting. So she can move to reconsider now. In my view, any member of the council can second that, and then you can take up that motion. If it's successful, then the matter's just before the body, as it was before her original motion, and she could restate that, or we could proceed with any other motion that the body wishes to entertain.
Okay, so any member can move to support the motion to reconsider regardless of how they voted?
The motion to reconsider has to be made by someone on the successful side.
Okay.
I believe the second can be made by any member of the panel.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Jackson? Do you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Point of clarification, that would change my original vote. Yes. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to reconsider the vote?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion. Councilmember Kelly?
Let me make sure we're going in the right direction. Corporation counsel, the motion to reconsider, we can approve. And then we, and then the motion to deny or to accept follows that, correct?
If the matter is successfully reconsidered, then it's as if no motions have been made, the matter's just before the body.
Then we start over.
We start, we start over.
Peoria has adopted a rule that's in conflict with, to your point, Your Honor, and I apologize. Peoria has adopted a rule of procedure that the seconder needs to be on the prevailing side as well. The council would need to favor that with a motion. I would point out that I don't consider that there's a proper motion before the body to approve this or an action to approve it either. So at this point, if the matter's not reconsidered, then the matter, somebody would either move to, to deny again or...
Or to approve.
To approve, and then it would be my view, given the will of the body, it would be perhaps in order for one of the members who is on the prevailing side to grace this with a second, but if not, it appears we'll get there one way or the other. So at this point, I apologize, but my initial response to your question was in error due to Peoria's local rule about...
Sure.
The seconder also needing to be on the prevailing side. Thank you, Your Honor.
The second, the seconder needs to be on the prevailing side, which you are not on the prevailing side, so seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, so the motion is to reconsider. We have a motion and we have a second to reconsider. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Graeb? Is that additional discussion? Okay, all right. Please cast your ballots. Motion to reconsider. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Jackson?
So, I have to restate my mo, motion, point of clarification? Okay. Let's make sure we do this right. I do this right. Okay, Madam Mayor, I, I do not support approval for a liquor license for this particular applicant at this location. Having said that... I do not support approval.
You have a motion to deny?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, motion to deny.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, the motion... Okay, the motion is to deny
Okay.
approval of this license. Please cast your ballots. Okay. Motion passes with three nays. Ali, Kelly, and Valpula. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation. Twenty-two dash three-six-seven is a communication from the City Manager with request to receive and file a presentation from Unity Place.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are pleased this evening to have with us Dr. Keith Nepp, who is the President of Unity Point Health here locally, and Mary Thompson, who is the President of Unity Place. And they're here to talk about the Young Minds Project and to share some information with the City Council. And I'll be happy to turn the floor over to them to come forward and say a few words and walk through the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor Lee.
Welcome, Dr. Nepp and Ms. Thompson. Welcome. Happy to have you here.
It's great to be here tonight. We appreciate the time to give an overview of this really much-needed project for our community, both for your awareness and the awareness of the community and to ask for your support. As City Manager Urick mentioned, I'm the President and CEO of Unity Point Health here in central Illinois. I've been in that role for about three and a half years, but I've been part of the organization since 2007. And I'm really proud of the history that I've inherited in this organization of helping to meet the mental health needs of the community. The Unity Point Organization, made up of Methodist Medical Center, Proctor Hospital, Beacon Hospital, and now Unity Place, has provided mental health services to the community going back to nineteen fifty-four, which was the first inpatient mental health unit opened in Peoria. Since that time, we've helped thousands of kids, and specifically on the child and adolescent unit, which also opened several decades ago, over thirty years ago. In 2002, a number of other institutions closed their doors, and Methodist remained open, continuing to provide inpatient services to the community. And in fact, in that year, we actually added another unit to expand capacity for the community. Another notable moment was in 2019 when the organization called Unity Place was formed. Those of you that have been here in the community for a long time know that the Human Service Center and Taz Wood Center for Wellness, our two community mental health centers here that have provided community-based services for individuals with substance use disorder and behavioral health disorders, also for many, many years. Those two organizations, combined with the hospital entities of Unity Point, to form the organization known as Unity Place. We're now three and a half years into that organization's history. And the vision of that organization is to provide comprehensive, integrated behavioral health services that can be a national model for how to provide these services better. Really pleased that we were able to successfully recruit a president for that organization. Who's with me here tonight, that's Mary Thompson, who is a clinician, who's skilled in this space, and has been leading that organization for us since the beginning of this year. Proud to have inherited this legacy, that this organization has stepped up time and again to meet the behavioral health needs of the community, but we want to tell you tonight that those needs are still unmet and a project that we're moving forward to try and help make a difference. The issue is that our kids are still in crisis. Methodist has the only inpatient beds in central Illinois for kids suffering from mental illness. That means if a child is at risk of serious harm, needs their safety protected, and needs to be in an inpatient setting, we're the only place that they can go outside of travel, well outside of this community. We average about sixty admissions per month to that inpatient unit. But unfortunately, over the past five years, we've had to turn away nearly two thousand six hundred kids because we haven't had enough capacity to care for those kids. We also care for those kids in a suboptimal environment. We have amazing staff. But that unit is in an older part of the hospital that doesn't have natural light, it doesn't have recreation space. And so we really need to improve the therapeutic environment for those kids, and we need to expand access for those kids. Recent community health needs survey of tenth-grade students showed us some really sobering information. Over thirty-one percent, so that's one in three kids, indicated in the last twelve months they felt sadness or hopelessness almost every day in the past two weeks, which is the usual definition for major depression, but more sobering than that, almost one out of five of tenth graders indicated that they had seriously considered attempting suicide in the past twelve months. That's not a survey from Chicago, or Los Angeles, or Carbondale, or anywhere else. That's from this community. I was stunned when I saw those numbers. So I'm going to turn things over to Mary Thompson and have her talk a little bit more about the need.
Thank you, Dr. Nepp. Well, thank you for hearing this presentation tonight. We have a great story to tell about the services we're providing and our desire to continue to expand those services. Really, we have a large need for a new space to treat our children and adolescents. As Dr. Nepp shared, we have our current unit on the inpatient, our inpatient unit is in a hospital tower. We do not have access to outdoor space. We have limited space for treatment of children. So the Headington Oaks facility really allows us to expand our care and to provide that care in a much better environment. We are able to have four courtyards at this space. We're able to have specialized treatment areas for expressive therapies, so art therapy, music therapy, and indoor recreation space, so it's going to allow us to enhance the care of our children. The other thing that's really important in the care of children and adolescents is for them to stay in their local community. So we do not separate them from their family at a time of crisis. I mean, imagine having your child hospitalized hours away from your community. And also adding the beds will eliminate some of the delays in care that we see. And those twenty-six hundred children that we could not treat in five years, we hope to treat them here at home. And then we are also expecting not just to add those inpatient beds, but to add outpatient services and to have collaborative spaces, so our families can have more of a one-stop shop. So when they need care, we'll be able to meet those needs in a warm, safe, welcoming environment. And then we also have seen an improvement in our reimbursements, but we still continue to have challenges to make that care available to all the children that need it. So again, we also are pleased at this facility to be able to create an environment where we think we'll be able to attract the best and the brightest in this field. We really do plan to be a model for the nation. What I would say is, in my professional experience, I've not seen a community come together in this way to provide this array of services. Typically, you have a hospital unit, maybe with some outpatient services, and then every other need for the child and family is provided in another location, and it creates barriers for our families in need. So having all of these services located in one area is really beneficial. We're also close to the communities that we serve, and we're really proud to be in that location. We are increasing from our twenty-three beds to forty-four beds, and I can never do the math in my head when I'm standing and doing a presentation, but essentially, we double our capacity, which is huge for us. The other thing that's beneficial about this space is that we'll be able to separate our care by age and gender so that we can be more specific in our treatment. So a child that's younger has much different treatment needs than an adolescent child. So we'll be able to provide very specialized care in this environment. The other thing that's really important for this facility is we'll be able to retrofit or make that space safe for a child that is having a behavioral health crisis. There is a lot of regulatory requirements relative to making that environment safe, and we'll be able to make sure that that unit is as safe as it can possibly be for our children and their families. So just a brief update on the status of the project. We were able to successfully purchase the Headington Oaks facility. We had unanimous approval from the state for a certificate of need. We've got a rezoning from the city of West Peoria. Again, that was a unanimous action. We're nearly finished with our schematic design and are ready to, almost ready to put this out for construction bid. And then once we're able to start construction, we expect about ten months from that date to be able to open and serve children, so we're expecting that to occur in late 2023. So here's some pictures of the facility. Again, it's a beautiful facility. Mechanically, it's very structurally sound, but we do, again, have a lot of renovation needs that are required to meet the specific needs of children and adolescents. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Nepp for some closing remarks.
We've been tremendously grateful for the support of the community for this project thus far. We've been really sharing this story of the plans that we've made and asking for support from the community. This will be a twenty-five to thirty million dollar project. And that price tag includes the purchase price of the facility as well as the renovations needed for the hospital components. If you've been by the Headington Oaks facility, it's big. And we won't need all of it for this hospital project. There will be additional space available for collaborators. And that is our goal, that we can bring in other social service agencies, other providers, to provide this one-stop-shop and a hub for community-based programming. So we'll need additional funding to complete those later phases of the project. But just this first portion is a twenty-five to thirty million dollar project. Our organization, Unity Point Health, and the local Methodist Board and Unity Place Boards have supported funding for half of that and have asked that we try to raise the additional support from philanthropic work and from other agencies and grants to provide for the financial needs for the project. This is not a profitable service line for us. It's really a part of the heart of our mission. And so for us to be successful, we really need to raise support for that. As you might imagine, I think the county feels like they've done their part here. You'll maybe recall that this was a facility that cost over forty million dollars to build. We purchased that for nine million dollars. We believe that that was a fair price, based on what the county could have gotten from the market. But obviously, you know, the county made an investment in this, and I think the county is pleased that we're stepping in to use this facility and to meet a critical community need. But it's pretty easy for us to look and say, the county of Peoria has done their part in supporting this project. We've also now received committed funding from the federal government. Representative LaHood secured a one million dollar earmark for us, and we're hopefully going to secure another million dollars from Senator Durbin and earmark funds for this project. And we've raised significant funding support from local individual donors and from foundations. We've secured much-needed improvement in our behavioral health inpatient reimbursement rates from the state of Illinois. And that was thanks to the work of Representative Gordon Booth, Senator Kayler, Senator Stoller, who helped to support that effort. So I wanted to share all that with you to just show the broad support that's behind this project from really so many different levels of government, and also so many individuals and individual foundations. And I think it's because everybody really sees the immense need for these services to be provided. So we are here, you know, first of all, to make you aware of the status of this project and because we're excited to be moving it forward, but also to request your support. And respectfully would ask your consideration for a million dollars in funding support from the city of Peoria in calendar year 2023. I don't know enough about your budget or the sources of funding that you're able to tap into to know how best you might be able to do that, or whether that request is the right one. But we think it is on par as we look with the support we're receiving from other agencies, and just to request your consideration for that. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Nepp, and thank you, Ms. Thompson, for that update. You know, we've cried out for this type of service and support, and you've stepped up, you know, to deliver. Even around this horseshoe, we've been crying out for this type of support. The United Way Needs Assessment, Annual Needs Assessment, identified mental illness as a strong need in our community and especially amongst our youth. And that's the type of service that you're providing. There's a lot of lights, so a lot of comments or questions coming your way. We're going to start with Councilmember Valpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Nepp and Ms. Thompson. It is a really great initiative, and thank you for all that you do. I mean, it is really sad and disheartening to see around seven hundred kids, you know, every year being treated for mental health in this community, especially from Peoria. If you look at your average admissions of sixty per month, that means we are seeing seven hundred kids every year. I mean, what is the national average in this kind of scenario of how many people get into, you know, being treated? And where does Peoria stand? And then also, the follow-up question is, what could be the reason if we are actually leading in that statistical significance?
I'll take a stab at that and ask Mary to set me straight if I misrepresent anything. I don't think that we are out of the ordinary. You would have to look at per capita rates of admissions and suicide and those diagnoses to have a fair representation of that. And I think our per capita rates are on par with other urban communities like ours. That was your first question, is how we compare to other communities. The second question, you know, where did this come from? That's a really challenging question for us. And I would say, we certainly see that in a number of cases, children and adolescents who are suffering from mental health disorders do have a history of substance use, or they have a history of family disruption, or they have a history of trauma. And so that certainly is a factor in this. But we also see children and adolescents coming from families that don't have any of those risk factors. And yet, we still see those kids struggling with these challenges. And so we're in a time when this issue is really a prominent one for us, and I think we're all trying to grapple with the why in some cases where that's not easily explainable. Mary, anything to add to that?
One thing I would say, or one thing I talk about is when families are stressed, children and youth are stressed. And we see that stress across, you know, all socioeconomic strata. So our families who are struggling with meeting basic needs, the families are stressed and their children are stressed. And then there's stress for children in more affluent areas. There's a lot of pressure on achievement. We all know the impacts of social media. All of those things have had a compounding impact on our children and our youth's mental health. And we do struggle with understanding some additional reasons why. But we're working our hardest to be here to help. Those are thoughtful questions.
I have one or two follow-up questions on that. So how does these kids get referred to the clinic? Does the parents do it, or does the school system do it? And how does this inpatient-outpatient thing work? And how many days is the retention time or withdrawal time? I'm not sure about it, but I just wanted to know, let's say, when a kid gets into the clinic inpatient, how much time he will be there in the clinic?
So referrals to our service come from the families and the children themselves. Sometimes they will call the emergency crisis line and be seen by a community response team. We do see a lot of referrals from family physicians. Schools and school counselors are heavily involved. So really, any adult that's interacting with a child, that sees a child in distress, can make a referral to us. We do see a lot of children just present to the emergency department in distress. So coming from all those different sources. So our average length of stay, so the length of time that a child is in the hospital averages between seven to ten days. Sometimes that is impacted when we have a child who's on our inpatient unit, who may be close to ready to go home, but maybe we could keep them a day or two longer just to make sure that the treatment is. to make sure that the treatment is impactful. We may have three or four or more children in our emergency department in the midst of a crisis, and so, oftentimes, we're faced with that dilemma of, do we discharge that child maybe a day or two before we would like to so we can respond to the child in crisis in the emergency department? So, that's the kind of challenge that we face on a day-to-day basis. Did that answer the questions?
It did, and if I may, I have a last, you know, it's a very broad question, but again, what educational piece that you think would be helpful rather than bringing them to the, you know, it's more being proactive? How do you really sense these things before they happen, and what kind of educational pieces you think would be helpful to be presented to the schools or the parents to kind of scale them up to say, "This is a candidate"? So, I mean, there may not be a perfect answer to this, but...
No, I think that's a great question, one we ask ourselves all the time as well. How can we reach out to families in need and help them, you know, help them understand what they can do to assist their child? I think a lot of the work that we're focused on, especially in the children's arena, is to be present in the school systems as much as we can. We do have presence in about eight schools right now and work closely with other agencies and entities that work in the schools because that's where our children are most of the time. I think beyond that, we need to continue to do outreach directly with parents, with children themselves. Interestingly, in some of our in-school programs, what we're hearing is the children and the adolescents are craving this information, and they really enjoy learning how to manage their mental health themselves. So, there's a lot of encouraging work in that way. To me, what's different about the children and adolescents we're treating now is that they're able to articulate those needs, there's less stigma, and so, we're able to reach them directly in their school settings. I do think of something that I'd like to see more of is more education with parents and families around how to talk with their children about mental health, how to support those families that are in distress, and we would, that's one of the benefits of having the Young Minds Project, is that we're able to not only provide care in our inpatient programs and our outpatient programs, but have those outreach to the community so that we're reaching children where they are because I feel that's really important so we can identify and offer treatment sooner in the course of their illness and reduce the impact and disruption to their life and their family's life if we're able to do that education and support more proactively.
Thank you again for what all you have done to this community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for being here tonight to be able to, I think, update and let our community know even more about this project. You know, you talked about the referendum that sort of created Headington Oaks, and maybe it was in forethought that as the public was actually thinking ahead for something that maybe might be needed. And while there's a transition from what its original intent was, I can't help but think that what an amazing place and partnership that you have found to be able to purchase that, to be able to turn this into what will be, I think, a strong asset for our community. You talk about capacity, and you talk about keeping that local, and I think that that cannot be emphasized enough because both for patients but also for those families to be able to know that they have superior foundational services right here in their community, which they can then be a part of, and it takes the fear and the stigma away, but it also increases our community conversation around this topic. 2019, you formed a really good partnership to be able to take mental health services within our community to a new level, and this continues that. I just want to thank you and applaud you for thinking forward on this, for being able to create not just a plan, but I think something that our full community can truly be proud of. One question with the transition that I think is expected with the hospital system at the end of the year, early next year, and I hear everything that you're saying, so I'm hearing that the intention is that their particular emphasis and energies will be just as strong as those that have brought us to this point forward. Can you maybe just address that a little bit so that the community knows that this is going to be something that we're going to see long-term and be very proud of in our community?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ruckregel. It's an excellent question, and I think you're referring to the planned transition of our local healthcare organization, which is now part of the Unity Point Health System, but we plan to become part of the Carl Health System. One thing I would mention with that change is that the local board that governs all of those entities, Methodist Proctor Peak and Unity Place, Methodist College, that local board, Methodist Health Services Corporation Board remains intact and still governs those facilities. The assets remained owned by the community. The parent organization changes from Unity Point to Carl. Carl has made commitments to us, binding commitments in our agreements that will be signed soon. Stay tuned for an announcement on that, to support continued investments in healthcare in this area, and one of those is this investment. So, they are very much behind this investment, and we'll stand behind it as we go forward.
And just one more thing I want to acknowledge, and you talked about it today here, is even though you're taking over what is traditionally very new property, you are investing quite a bit of dollars into making for sure that it meets the needs and that it does. So, congratulations on that. Thank you for being here and look forward to all of your efforts in the future.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions. First of all, I echo the sentiment of my two colleagues, Dr. Valpula and Councilman Ruckregel. Couple of questions. ARPA money, does it qualify for this request?
It does. I mean, this is, behavioral health services is one of the allowable expenses with the American Rescue Plan Fund, so that is certainly something that we could look at.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much for all the work you do. I know there's a tremendous amount of need in this community, and I know it's unmet. I want to talk about the numbers just a little bit to make sure I understand the need. When we're looking at 2,600 kids that were turned away the last five years, that's about 520 kids per year on the average. That's 45 kids a month, right? So, in your presentation, I'm reading you are taking about 60 kids per month right now, and also that we only have, even with the new facility, we're only going to have 44 beds, right? So, if we're, if we, short 45 kids already, I'm looking at about 100 kids, are these kids need a bed? All these kids need a bed every night, or, I mean, there's different treatment? Do we really need 100, 120 beds just for the current situation? Help me understand those numbers, please.
Yeah, I would say we definitely need those beds. So, essentially, we're doubling our capacity, so that would mean we'd be averaging over 100 admissions a month would be our goal, and I think that need is here in this community. When we turn children away for care, those children that are sent out of our community, they've been determined to need inpatient psychiatric care, and there's specific requirements for intensity of illness that has to be met. So, I think the thing that's really hard for us is to send them to Springfield or to the Chicago area is really where we end up sending these kiddos, and we, as part of our certificate of need process, had to communicate that need to the state, which we successfully did, and we're just confident that those beds will be utilized. The other part of the work, though, is to not hospitalized a child unless it's needed because it is disruptive. So, in addition to expanding those inpatient beds, we're going to be expanding and adding outpatient services so that we can either prevent a hospitalization that might have been required if they didn't have treatment sooner, and then also to help transition a child after a hospitalization so that they remain stable and that they can sustain the treatment gains that they've achieved during their hospital stay. So, it's really a multi-pronged approach. We want to be there when a child is in crisis and needs those inpatient beds, but the goal is that we would have those preventative services, those educational services, and those wraparound services to avoid unnecessary hospitalizations or hospitalizations that occur just because of a delay or deferred care, and that's part of what we're seeing now is a delayed and deferred care through the pandemic and just having those unmet needs in the outpatient setting as well. So, really trying to look at wrapping care and services around children to sustain them as much as we can in their home or in the community, and then, when they need hospitalization, they can be with us, and we'll have a bed available for them.
Well, again, thank you very much for all the work you're doing. I'm very supportive of what you're doing, and I understand it's a real need in our community, so thank you very much for all you do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Knapp and Ms. Thompson, for tonight's presentation. I appreciate you all being a leader in this space, being proactive. We know that child and adolescent mental health really has increased, especially when we talk about as we transition through the pandemic, and so, I think it's very important that we address these issues now before these children and adolescents become adults because at that point, sometimes that clay is hard, and it's hard to massage it and address some of those issues. I love the process of how these young people are going to be able to stay within our community, stay close to family, stay close to friends. I love the idea that you all are going to be providing the family with the educational tools because I'm, as someone who's had family members struggle with mental health, that's the challenging thing as well, too, is how do you support that loved one when you haven't had that experience before? So, this is a great, great, great initiative for our community. I definitely support seeing how we can support it as a city. Councilman Seer, he took my question, asking if this was an eligible expense with ARPA funds, so I definitely look forward to seeing what type of proposal Mr. Manager and Director Craddy can bring back so that the city of Peoria can get behind this initiative, but thank you so much.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, want to thank you, Dr. Knapp, and Unity Point for developing this project to address this need that's been here for quite a while and has really become almost a crisis due to partly the pandemic. I guess my question is, you know, we're towards the end of our budget, and although it's much healthier than it's been in a lot of the most recent prior years, I'm wondering if your request, as we try to figure out how to fulfill it and support the program, is it, could it be just as impactful if it was spread out over two or three years? Or do you need, you know, the million dollars in 2023? If you can answer that.
We'll be able to use it in future years. There's no doubt about that. As I mentioned, this isn't a profitable service line for us, and so, and we have additional phases of the project that will come due. We will need, probably our biggest challenge as we move forward, beyond the funding of the initial work that needs to be done to renovate the building, is going to be recruiting and retaining the professional staff that we need to meet this need. So, that's child and adolescent psychiatrists, therapists, nurses, other mental health staff. And thankfully, you know, we have Methodist College, we have a partnership with University of Illinois College of Medicine, Department of Psychiatry, and a residency program that can help to meet that need, but we'll need to put significant dollars, I'm sure, into recruitment and retention of staff. So, we're certainly appreciative of any support you can provide. That said, the construction need and the, you know, the shortfall for the funding is most acute in this first phase, and so, that's the reason for the 2023 ask.
And then, I guess, I just want to check my numbers. It sounds like with the half a million that Unity Point, or I'm sorry, the half of the money that's needed is being raised through Unity Point or provided, plus the money that you've gotten from the federal government and the commitments, how short are you? And I assume you're going to start a capital campaign and all of that, so...
That capital campaign is well underway, and we're about three-quarters of the way to meeting the fundraising goal that we need for this first phase.
And what's the total goal?
Well, we'd like to fund half of the project, so, you know, $25 to $30 million project, depending on where the construction piece comes in, means $12.5 to $15 million in support needed.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
$12.5 to $15 million is our target to raise in external support for the project.
And then, you've raised how much so far?
We're approaching 10.
Pardon?
We're approaching 10.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and I do support this program. It's a huge need and will be a huge asset, and hopefully, we can work something out and get you the funding that you need from us. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Grayup.
Well, I do have to ask this question with a great deal of respect, but cognizant of the history of this community, many, many previous city councils have been very concerned about the lack of mental health services we've had for the Peoria community and our regional community for both our adolescents and our adults. Why now? Why are you coming forward now, tonight, to do something which many previous councils have been pleading for our hospitals to do, and I'm not singling you out since you're not the only hospital? Why now?
I would point you back to the initial slides in the presentation. We've been at this for 30 years, and the need continues to grow, so this is something we've been providing services for, for a long time. We just have struggled to provide enough, and I would thank my predecessors and the vision of my predecessors at Unity Point and at Methodist in particular for having the foresight to invest in a child and adolescent unit in the first place and to sustain that investment even against significant financial headwinds, but also to have the vision to create Unity Place and to have this project on the horizon. The aspiration to expand our child and adolescent unit has been there for a decade, and we actually had plans to put that facility elsewhere. We were looking at space on the Proctor Hospital campus to build a new facility, and we're starting the capital campaign to go down that road when we became aware of the Headington Oaks facility and the opportunity to repurpose an existing asset. So, I think your question is a fair one of, you know, why are we here in 2022? I would tell you, we've been here for 30 years, but the need continues to grow, and unfortunately, this service line has not been adequately funded. Whether you look at commercial insurance payers or you look at governmental payers, we have not been paid enough to meet the cost of providing this service. It's been provided because of the mission of the organization to meet that need, which is why we're here asking for both your support and the community's support in raising the adequate funds to go forward. But it is more pressing now because the demands have gone up in recent years compared to where they've been in past years.
Well, since the closure of Zeller Zone Center, everybody who lives in Peoria, the Peoria region, knows that we've been without the kind of mental health safety net we have so badly needed, and so, for whatever reason, you're here tonight to say you're about to address a huge gap in that social safety net as it relates to adolescent behavioral medicine. That's fantastic. What steps, if any, have you taken to coordinate what you're suggesting you're going to do in West Peoria with OSF and their plans to build an adult psychiatric hospital on Route 91? Because again, it seems like we've had a fractured mental health care delivery system which is redounded to the distinct disservice to the people of Peoria and this region. What plans do you have to work with them to address both our adolescents and our adults, or have you had conversations with OSF that just made the 91, Route 91 announcement?
Let me start by commenting on some of the work we have done with the University of Illinois, OSF, Heartland Healthcare, and other... of Illinois, OSF, Heartland Healthcare and others in the formation of a healthcare collaborative. And I would thank Mayor Lee and Senator Kaler for, uh, bringing the community together, uh, several years ago, uh, to really ask us to look at health equity issues and what are we doing to address healthcare inequities? From that came a community collaborative and from that came a collaborative focused on the behavioral health needs. And we have looked at, uh, the things that we can do out in the community. Uh, how do we get in front of people needing to come into the hospital? So this vision that the Headington Oaks facility could be a hub with services provided, connected with, uh, the Sheriff's Department, the county jail, the police department, the schools, families, other social service agencies, that's the work that that collaborative is doing. And those are things that we can do and do do with other healthcare organizations, including OSF. What we're not allowed to do, according to the Federal Trade Commission, is to work together to provide specific health services in our hospitals. We're required to be competitors in that space. So I can't plan with OSF to build a behavioral health facility together because the FTC prohibits us from doing that. So, um, this project really is not connected to the project that was recently announced. And as a reminder, this is a child and adolescent project and we understand that to be an adult project. Uh, so this need that we're trying to address, uh, is a distinct need that this project helps to meet.
Well, but parents have, uh, children have parents and parents have children. And it'd be nice if we would have a cohesive mental health care delivery system, which we haven't had in this community for decades. Hence, the reason for my question, I didn't say you had to be in business with OSF. Nobody suggested that. But I think there needs to be a dialogue in terms of what you're going to do on the, on the adolescent side of behavioral medicine, what they have announced that they intend to do with their 100-bed-plus psychiatric hospital, which primarily will address the needs of adults. I would hope those discussions would occur. First, I've heard tonight a request for a million dollars from the Peoria City Council. Uh, that's an interesting request, uh, but believe me, we're happy that you're here, but we wish you'd been here a long time ago. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, um, Dr. Nepp and Ms. Thompson for the presentation and just raising the awareness of this to the community at large because I think a lot of people have heard bits and pieces about what's happening at Headington Oaks. So hopefully this will help be that bully pulpit to get the word out for you. You know, we've talked a lot around this horseshoe about violence interruptors and, and what we can do to curb violence. And I think this really fits into that discussion so nicely because we all know that there's a lot of things that contribute to what we see manifested on the streets sometimes. So I'm really excited to see how this plays out and the impact it will have for our community going forward. You mentioned, um, a presence in the schools and we, we know from our discussion with our, um, education community that staffing counselor positions, you know, that's something they're woefully short on. How, what, what exactly does your presence in the schools look like and how will you be working with Peoria Public Schools in that regard?
So we have a presence in about eight schools right now. And one of the things that I'm really proud of with our staff is that based on the, the volume of need, they used to provide more individual-based services. So they would meet with the kids one-on-one, do some counseling with them. What they've shifted to based on the identified need and just making the best use of the available resources is they do more in-class instruction and more groups. So instead of reaching one child in a 20 minutes, an hour, half an hour, they're talking to a roomful of 20 to 25 kids. And what's really interesting is when you hear the clinicians talk about that, uh, the, the kids look forward to our mental health providers being in the classroom and providing that instruction. It normalizes a conversation around anxiety, depression, suicidality. So creates that opportunity for children to talk about those needs. So I think we'll continue to innovate in those ways to reach more children with the resources that we have. That's really our challenge right now is how do we impact as many children as possible? Um, so we're, you know, continually looking for ways to increase that presence and to, um, avail more children of just resources around how to manage anxiety, depression, frustrations, social issues.
That's, that's wonderful. And I, I just wrote down your words there, normalize the discussion. I think that's something, um, for people of my generation, that was a discussion that was not ever had. So to see that become more normalized is something that's, can only be healthy for all of us. Um, just one final, um, question. You, you referenced 10th graders as, as having been surveyed in the initial study here. When you talk about child and adolescent, will they age out at 18? What's the earliest age they would be able to qualify for services? What, what specifically is child and adolescent, um, the, the market, if you will?
Yeah, we treat children as young as four, all the way through 18. Um, occasionally, uh, you know, we, we can bend those numbers if we need to, to meet a specific need. So some of that depends on their clinical presentation and what needs they have, but it's four to 18.
Thank you very much. And, um, I would echo the comments from multiple colleagues here that this certainly seems like something, um, well worthwhile for, for our support. So we'll look forward to doing what we can going forward. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question along with the comment. Um, well, I'm, I'm going to start. You talked a little bit about, uh, working with Tazwell Mental Health, uh, and the fact that you do, uh, work with eight schools. Um, how broad do you see your service net extending? What, will you be servicing all of central Illinois? How far do you see the scope of your services reaching? Because there's, you know, we, there's a, there's a broad community outside of Peoria in general that, uh, where there's a big need for these types of services as well.
Yeah, I'll speak to that briefly and then let Dr. Nepp, uh, add anything that I've omitted. I'm still learning the area, uh, but one thing I know is that it's, this community's much like many other communities across the nation. The need is, um, very prevalent here, but it also extends across the midsection, really where the, the, uh, downstate, uh, area, so to speak. I mean, there's a lot of services in the Chicago area still inadequate, but from Peoria, you know, all the way through the downstate, we should be able to meet those needs. I would expect we'll draw children and adolescents because of this very specialized care from all across the state. That's really what we would expect and that we would extend our reach beyond just our traditional, you know, what we consider our tri-county area, that reach will extend.
Our clinic and community-based services through Unity Point Clinic locations and Tazwood Human Service Center are really, uh, primarily in the tri-county area, although, um, Human Service Center and Tazwood have some outreach in other communities, uh, through downstate Illinois. We modeled the need, um, back to the earlier question about, you know, how many, um, admissions we would expect, primarily on that, uh, tri-county and surrounding area. Uh, so that's our goal is to make sure we're meeting that local need. But, uh, as, as Mary mentioned, um, to the degree we have any excess capacity, um, I'm confident we'll have requests for, um, taking care of, of children and adolescents from a broader area, uh, to the degree we could meet that need.
Well, my last comment, I, I just want to say, I remember too when Zeller Zone, uh, closed many years ago and I, I, uh, you know, while we were left in a situation as a community with no place for lots of people needing mental health services, Unity Point did at the time, uh, expand some of its, uh, services and beds up on the eighth floor. So, uh, I'm, I'm just grateful that you have continued, uh, you know, to, uh, respond to the need for services. And I would like to say this, um, even with two hospitals, Unity Point doing what you're doing in the old, uh, Headington Oaks facility and OSF, Madam Mayor, there is still a big need out there for services, not only for children, but also adults who are suffering, uh, and families who are in crisis. So I'm just happy that you've decided to do something and I hope even with both hospitals providing something, we'll, uh, begin to at least maybe put a dent in some of the need that's out there. There are hundreds of families in crisis right now. So I commend you for what you're doing and, uh, whatever we can do, we're here to support you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We're sending hundreds or thousands of youth and adults to other areas outside of the City of Peoria or the, this area to get service. So we want to be able to serve them locally. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, Dr. Nepp and Ms. Thompson, thank you for your presentation and for the work you're doing. I'm, I'm very happy about what you're up to. Um, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think, uh, in my, uh, amateur status as a clinician, it seems like we've been going the wrong way for a very, very long time. We've moved away from residential care, nice big campuses, uh, fully staffed, to initially, oh, we can handle everything with drugs and that didn't work and all of a sudden we got a homeless population. Um, so I think we're moving in the, in, in the right direction and I'm, I'm very happy about it. My colleagues here are brilliant. They've asked all my questions except a couple. But I do wonder, what kind of, uh, rate of suicide do we have with our young people in this, in this area?
I guess I, I'm a little embarrassed to admit I don't know the actual, you know, suicide, death by suicide rate. Um, I could get that information for you, but I don't have it top of mind, to be honest. Um, I do know the suicidality has increased. So in other words, the number of children contemplating suicide, the number of kids making suicide attempts are increasing, but I'd have to get you statistics. I apologize. I don't know that off, offhand.
It's, it's a little dear to my heart. I, uh, lost a nephew that way, not around here, but, and, uh, he was 16 and it was, uh, you know, uh, very difficult. But, um, I, 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 as I say, I'm not a professional, but I'm, as an amateur, I'm very happy with the direction we seem to be going in mental health. I think it's, it's a better way to go than we've been practicing now for, I don't know, 50 years or 60 years. Uh, so, uh, good on you and, uh, please, uh, continue that good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, will Unity Place become Carl Place or will it stay Unity Place?
That is one of the questions of the day, Madam Mayor. Um, we are, actually, Mary's been working with the board on what the new name for Unity Place will be, but, uh, we want to keep that place in the name and, um, we're working on that. But it will be part of, uh, our organization going forward and will continue in its integrated structure, um, with the community and hospital components working together in the future.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Manager, we're in the middle of budget, uh, discussions now. We still have a few weeks remaining. I'd like to ask you to look at some options for council to consider, whether it's ARPA funding or some mix of funding, uh, and come back if you would with, uh, two to three different options for council to consider.
We'd be happy to.
Councilmember Graham?
Mr. Manager, since this would, would have a financial aspect to it, uh, could you please get some clarity because we're not getting it tonight as to when Unity Place will become Carl Place and how that would work legally as far as any monies that this body would choose to give? Because right now I'm not getting a clear understanding of that. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much for your presentation and answering all the questions. I appreciate your work. Thank you.
I believe we need a motion to receive and file the presentation.
Oh, yes. Uh, move by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We are at regular business. 22-368 is a communication from the City Manager with a request to approve the Third Amendment to the lease agreement for the Rock Island Depot located at 212 Southwest Water Street.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you. Um, this is, uh, kind of the end of the Central Business District TIF is the end of this year. Um, we've had some discussions with Kurt Huber, who is, um, through his, his LLC, uh, has been operating River Station. River Station has the opportunity to get a tenant into, uh, the section that runs along the river. Um, they are looking, Kurt is, uh, Mr. Huber is looking at putting in, um, some leasehold improvements into the space, uh, and just asked if the city could participate. Uh, we own this building, so any improvements obviously that are made, um, does assist the city and then any rent that is paid to the, you know, from the tenants comes back to the city as well as part of our arrangement with Mr. Huber. So, um, staff would recommend a $75,000, uh, contribution out of the TIF. This is, we do have some funds available and this is the last year we can use them. Um, and we would, um, see, hope to see that, that the tenant would be into the space, hopefully by the, uh, beginning of the year.
Is this located in First or Second District?
It's in the Second District.
It is. Okay.
This is part of, part of, the Central Business District is now located in the Second District.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Uh, move by Councilmember Graham, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-369 is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request to approve a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the purchase of the Officer Safety Plan 7 Plus and Fleet 3 Advanced Bundle to include purchase of 210 body-worn cameras, 210 tasers, 86 in-car cameras, hardware, installation, training, software and associated subscription costs in the amount of $3,398,734. And on your desk is a copy of the presentation.
Chief? Can you give us some insight?
Yes, uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. We are excited at the potential of having this top-of-the-line technology. Axon will put us at the forefront of public safety technology, uh, improve our evidence collection, continue to reduce complaints against officers and improve officer confidence, performance and safety. Uh, most importantly, it will continue to improve transparency with our community. And with that said, I'm going to ask for the professionals to come up here on this, uh, information. I have, uh, Jack Newkirk, our Police Technology Administrator, and I have Jeff Matthews here with Axon, uh, to be able to answer any further questions, so...
Jack? Jeff?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, real quick, I just got a quick slide deck I'd like to go and run you guys through if that's all right, uh, just to kind of go over the purchase, a little bit of the history behind this and, uh, kind of where we stand today. Uh, back in 2021, we issued, uh, RFP 10-21 for the replacement of our interview room system, which was failing. Uh, the RFP actually required, uh, the vendor to provide body-worn camera and in-car details as well as interview room solution details. Uh, three vendors submitted proposals. Axon's proposal was chosen. Uh, with that purchase in February of 2022, we also went live on Axon's cloud digital evidence management system, which was Evidence.com. Uh, during this purchase, all of our PD users received Evidence.com licenses, uh, and that included Axon Capture and Axon Citizen. Uh, Axon Citizen, you may be familiar with. Uh, basically that allows our citizens to submit evidence... familiar with. Basically, that allows our citizens to submit evidence directly to our officers via the cloud platform such as Ring Doorbell, footage, and so on. Our police department is currently using Evidence.com for all of our digital evidence storage except for body worn camera and in-car video. Currently, our in-car video system is outdated and all of our units are into life and no suitable replacements exist from that current vendor. As well, our V-View Body Worn Camera System will be into life in 2024, and we have replaced under warranty over 600 cameras. Starting at the end of 2023, those will no longer be warranty replaceable and will cost about $500 per camera. Also, our local storage right now is at maximum capacity. We're estimating at this point by spring 2023, we are going to be maxed out on storage, which will either require additional hard drives to be purchased or replaced, which is kind of a risky operation, or a whole new onsite storage unit to be purchased. And in addition, our tasers are outdated. Under DCO grant funding, we are going to ask to purchase the Axon in-car system, the Fleet Three Advanced, as well as the Axon Body Worn Camera System. The OSP seven plus is what we want to do the body worn camera hardware under, as well as the storage and device licensing, as well as tasers, which we want to use our 2022 CIP account for. With the OSP seven plus plan, we're going to be getting Axon Performance Standards, Respond Plus, Axon Records licenses, Redaction Assistant, Axon Signal. We're also going to get our V-View Body Worn Camera video migrated. In addition, with the Fleet Three Advanced package, we're going to be getting 86 squad cars outfitted with the Fleet Three in-car system that is going to have ALPR technology built in. Under the OSP seven plus and Fleet Package, the 86 cars are going to actually have mobile technology for ALPR. We're also going to be receiving those record licenses at a 40% discount. So if the city decides, along with Delta Works, to utilize Axon as the RMS platform in that current project, we can go ahead and do that. And the only thing that's going to cost us money at that point for RMS is moving forward and migrating our data from ADSI. We're currently in the middle of a trial period of the body cams and Fleet Three. Some of the data, you can see we surveyed our officers. They're getting outstanding ratings as compared to the V-View and L3 systems. We've kind of outlined the cost here. Some of the DCO funding is being split with county. We're splitting that by unit percentage. So 210 body cams for us and 81 for them, 86 in-car cameras for us and 71 for them. Obviously, this is going to reduce our man-hours on our officers with digital video evidence, our records with FOIA and redaction times, as well as our sharing with the state's attorney's office, who's also on Evidence.com, our support staff with replacing and troubleshooting, and obviously on our investigative personnel. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. If there's any questions for me or like the chief said, our sales rep, Jeff Matthews is here as well to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I recall, I think, when body cams were first being discussed, one of the big, big concerns was storage and the cost of storage. How long have we been using body cams and, you know, putting their results in storage?
We have been using since October 2018, so exactly four years.
Okay, four years. The new storage that we're, that is being proposed, what does it look like life-wise for that amount of storage?
It is cloud storage, and we are actually going with the unlimited plan for the body cam and in-car. And we currently have unlimited storage for our interview rooms as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The $150,000 initial fund, is that coming out of the 2022 budget? Or will that be coming out of your 2023 CIP?
That's going to be coming out of the 22 CIP for tasers that we have. I believe we have the initial 150,000 still sitting in that account.
Sounds good. What's up, Jack? Class of 2007. Rich was in the building. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of my question was asked, but let's, I have one administrative question going back to the quote that was presented to us. The quote expired on 9/30/2022. So what are we doing when the quote was issued on 9/16? And now the estimated contract date is in a week from now, and the quote is expired. So can you please explain on that?
Yeah, that's just a clarifier. We've already updated the quote expiration date. All the numbers remain the same.
Okay. The second question I have is just to go back on Councilman Kelly's question. So we say we, in 2023, we will be full with the storage. Now we are going to go with the next set of cameras. So what are we going to do with the past storage? How do you, how do you plan to keep it?
So we are actually going to migrate all of our V-View Body Worn Camera data into Axon's Evidence.com. And I'll let Jeff touch on that here, too, just to provide any clarification. With the L3 system, which is our in-car video, and then also our prior interview room system, that system actually backs up to Blu-ray disc currently. So, and those will be archived into evidence. So the V-View system essentially, once we're off of it and our storage is migrated, East Peoria is going with Axon as well. They are on our storage server. And then Park District, I believe, is going with another vendor. Once all that data's been migrated off of V-View, we're going to shut down that server and once it's no longer needed. However, with the L3, we're going to keep that online just for the archival disc so we can actually read those discs and read the data on it. And then I can let Jeff clarify any questions you may have as far as the migration of the V-View data. Yeah, just to highlight that really quick. So all the videos and metadata associated with that, that the PD has today, we'll go over to Evidence.com so that they can utilize all the tools that are in the efficiencies that Jack was talking about earlier with redaction and sharing and things like that. There's no more, I mean, it's 2022, right? There's no more burning DVDs and Blu-rays and spending man-hours for that. They can share a full case in 30 seconds to the prosecuting attorneys who we set up on their own, for instance of Evidence.com, to go back and forth with that.
And the last one is, when you go back to the survey, you spoke about the L3 system, but then the survey says that LG, L3 system was very easy to use and learn, and there is a strong disagreement. So is there a training that is going to be provided for the officers to use the system?
So currently, once we went live with the Evidence.com system, L3 is our old one. With Evidence.com, when we went live back in February with the interview rooms, we actually trained our officers on Evidence.com, trained them how to utilize that system to work with digital video evidence, pictures, the Axon Capture app, everything. We even had a professional services manager come down from Axon and train our folks on that. So when we moved to body cam, granted, we've already been transitioning with the trial and evaluation period, and we've gotten some training out of that. We're going to do full training on that as well. And then we train all of our recruit officers as they come in from the academy on it as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a, maybe just a couple of questions. You know, I'm always curious. Just in a brief conversation with the chief, he said this new system would provide greater transparency. And I'm just kind of wondering, what is that, what does that mean? How does that look for someone who goes back and gets an opportunity to review body cam? What's the, is it going to be different from what we would see today viewing body cam from an incident?
So basically, with that, what that's going to look like, internal and external, if you don't mind, I'll start with internal. One of the modules that we're getting with this is called Axon Performance. So what that's going to do is provide our supervisors with an opportunity to randomly review body cam video from their squads. And they can critique that video and give that officer feedback, which we can set in the system. So currently with our V-View system, there is no good way to randomize other than, you know, scrolling on the screen and holding your finger somewhere and opening your eyes to randomize review of that video, so to speak. And there's no feedback other than obviously, you know, talking to that officer in person, hey, you know, I like that you did this, didn't like that you did that, or great job on that call. This is going to have set metrics that they can actually look at. The supervisor can go back and look at, our command staff can go back and look at and review and see, all right, you know, hey, maybe we have a problem here. Maybe there's some early warning stuff we need to look at. Or, hey, this officer's doing really great, things like that. As far as external-wise transparency and everything else, not, you know, FOIA and redaction are probably our biggest, biggest enemies currently in records. Currently, it takes a great amount of time just to redact a 20-minute squad car video or a 10-minute body worn camera video. With the package that we're getting with Axon under this contract, we're actually going to have Redaction Assistant, which basically does all the work for them minus a few tweaks. It's going to basically speed up that process to where we can be quicker on response on FOIA requests and things like that and get that video out quicker.
One, oh, go ahead.
If I can just piggyback off of that just a little bit, on the performance piece, that algorithm that's built for the randomized video review, it essentially ensures that, what do you want to say, like limitless or useless videos aren't the ones being reviewed? The ones with more priority are the ones that, like, say a taser is armed, or a firearm is pulled out of the holster, or you can set different parameters on that based on CAD call type, right? So to make sure the ones that are high-stress situations, the one that are, where they can direct full training, those are the ones being reviewed and feedback provided, not just the baseline officer, but also up the stream to the chief, which then he can share with you guys. There's a report that's generated out of that to say, hey, based on our body worn camera policy, when there should be a body worn camera video, there's a body worn camera video 99% of the time. Like, there's pie charts on that particular performance piece that adds to the transparency that you were asking about. And then further to like today, not to badmouth, like, technology advances, right? And so with this, with this solution, with this package, you're essentially future-proof from a hardware and a software perspective, because as new things come out, the PD is going to get those. So as the cameras are more closely mirroring what the human eye sees, clarity, right? So there's not shakiness that you experience in some of the older technology, clearness when you're taking a still image and things like that. But that clarity comes out of there and the light, this is a quick example, the light coming, if you're human-eyed, right, you're coming from bright outside and you go into a dark building, it takes your eye a certain amount of time to transition to that. Cameras, technology is different. Well, that technology is advanced now. It's most more closely like the human eye, which can show some evidence on the screen very quickly. So to that transparency piece, that, all those things tie into that.
Does it make any difference if, night time, is it better?
So, again, all of our cameras are designed to see what the human eye sees. So if the officer needs a flashlight, the camera needs a flashlight, right? The only camera that has infrared would be in the backseat of a patrol car, because that, like, if you have someone back there, right, you want to make sure you're seeing what's going on nonstop. But if the officer needs a flashlight, we want that camera to tell the story that the officer sees when they made the decisions they made. And one thing I'd like to add to that, too, when we took these out initially for the trial and evaluation period, we actually had a unique opportunity on a call to be with an officer that was using a V-View camera and an officer that was using a Axon camera. And the difference between those two cameras, not literally night and day, as far as lighting goes, but as far as picture quality and audio quality, it's outstandingly better.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really informative presentation here. Appreciate it. If I'm reading this right, we're going to be acquiring 210 new body worn cameras and 86 in-car cameras, is that right? And earlier in the presentation, you mentioned that we had replaced 600 of those cameras over the last four years. Is, how many did we buy in 2018?
I believe, I'd have to go back and double-check the numbers, but I believe it was on the order of 250 to 240. And the reason being for that was because the way those cameras worked, and also with that being a newer initiative and newer program back in 18, we bought along the lines of 25 spare cameras. And the 600 you're seeing that have been replaced, I mean, there's, I can probably easily go back and pick out at least 10 different officers that, no fault of their own, they've gone through four or five body cams of their own already with these V-View cameras. So just to touch on that, so, right, it's technology, and they're not sitting behind a desk all the time. But what I will say is that the mechanical failure within, inside, the cameras that the PD is getting here has a national return rate of less than 3%, which eliminates that headache that Jack has spent probably a good portion of his day over the last several years on. So that, that experience will drop and save many man-hours on that alone.
So was our experience above the, I mean, not that you probably have this off the top of your head, but you think this was what everybody was experiencing, or were we an outlier?
No, without a doubt, everybody was experiencing it. I've talked to East Peoria, I've talked to Peoria County, Park District. I mean, we were the four agencies back in 18 that went in on this, and everybody's kind of experiencing the same things, the same headaches. We're not alone in this with V-View.
Well, we're excited to get you up to the modern technology. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. I think it says after, the grant money's going to cover the initial phase, but after that, it does say the remaining years will have to be budgeted in our budget. Do we have a ballpark of what that's going to be?
Yeah, and I know this is hard to see because I guess I'm not good with colors. So what that's going to look like, our DCO funding and then plus the taser CIP is going to pay initially, basically just be a first year one payment and reduced total contract costs for the five years. After that, we will be paying, it looks like, I also cut off my numbers there, too. Fantastic. Yeah, I cut off my numbers on that slide. Any chance we could zoom that slideshow in? Just shy of 500,000 yearly payment, 2023 start. Actually, I just realized I printed my slide deck, too. So I guess I could just look there instead of the other thing.
And that's how much we'll have to pay after 2023? It'll be at least a $514,000?
That's correct. Yep, 514,652 and 88 cents.
How much do we pay right now for the cameras and everything?
Right now, zero. We paid for everything upfront because it was an on-premise solution, and we purchased all the hardware. However, when you look at the cost of when things start going end of life or out of warranty, it's about $500 a camera, about roughly $4,000 a dock, which we've had to warranty replace one of those, a docking station for the cameras, plus the cost of hard drives, NAS storage. We also have a backup storage thing. So we're, we're going to eat those costs in the long run, if, you know, if we keep a local storage solution as well, especially once this V-View product goes end of life, not a warranty. But currently, we do not, to answer your question directly, we do not pay anything as far as subscription costs for software or hardware at this time for body cam or in-car.
So just, I mean, this is a basic question, I guess, for the city manager. In our budget book, our budget analysis, we've projected future budgets you're taking into consideration that will have this $500,000 at least additional cost every year?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One last clarification question. If you go back to the proposed plan benefits page, so if you see that underline thing, could you throw some light on that? Why can the city not hold the records in our record management system? Why should we give our records to Axon rather than keeping it with us? And what does it cost for us to keep the records with us?
So what we're doing right now with Delta Works, ADSI, as I'm sure you all are aware, ADSI is not functioning the way we want. ADSI is not functioning the way we want to. It's another one of those systems that we've kind of need to replace. Currently, right now, with ADSI, that is an on-premise solution, but the issue there is, we also house that on-premise solution for the county and for a lot of surrounding agencies. So what Delta Works is doing is they're consulting us on that changeover for a new CAD and new RMS vendor. These licenses that are included with Axon Records are part of that OSP7+ package, and so they're discounted to that 40% or so that's there in the quote. If we went with Axon RMS, the only thing that's really changing there is we're going, same thing we're doing right now, from a cloud, from an on-prem solution to a cloud solution. But because we have so many other stakeholders involved with this ADSI server, we really want to make sure that, you know, everybody, the consultants with Delta Works can do their job, make the best recommendation for us as a city, and then, you know, also with our stakeholders as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thanks for the clarification.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this annual fee replaces an ongoing capital investment from wear and tear, breakdowns, et cetera, et cetera. Is that, is that fair?
That's correct. And Jeff, would you like to touch on the warranty process and the precautions?
No, before we go there, I'm just wondering what we were spending year to year to year on replacing the stuff that was breaking down, et cetera?
Thankfully, nothing, because everything was still under warranty. So basically, just to kind of give you an idea of what we do when, when a body cam breaks, is we'll take that, we've got some spares on hand that will replace those, give it to the officer, and then once we have 24 cameras on bad, they ship 24 in a box, we submit a warranty replacement claim, list out the serial number, what went wrong with it, and then they send us 24 replacements. So we've been cycling through those, but it's coming at no cost luckily, because they're still under warranty.
Do you know what the initial, then, cost was?
Um, I know the grant that we received was on the order of 500,000. That grant covered not only the hardware, the body cam hardware and the software solution, but it also covered East Peoria's and Park Districts, which are obviously lower numbers, as well as the hardware required for the NAS storage solution. Like I said, the docks are around $4,000 each, and we have 24 of those, and the cameras were around 500 each, and we had roughly 240 to 250 of those. So just on cameras and body cams alone, you're probably looking a little bit over 150, 150,000 with that and the software setup.
Okay, so we're...
I think that the other thing to not lose sight of here is the total cost of ownership, right? So you're, what Jack's talking about is the hardware alone, and then some of the local software, but the total cost of ownership and the man-hours that they're putting into that system versus what they'll have to do with the, with the program that they've selected is vastly less on this in terms of man-hours, which is a hard cost that you guys pay today. He mentioned earlier the warranty. With this plan, you're essentially getting three sets of, of body cameras, so you get a set upfront, and then at month 30, that's when we guarantee you got 12 hours battery life, because everybody knows their cell phone, right? A lithium ion battery only holds a certain amount of charge over time. So once that depletes, we send you a new set of cameras. If the Axon Body 4 is out, and we call it that, I don't know what that name's going to be, right, but if that's, if that comes out, you get the Body 4 at the Body 3 price. Same thing at that, at month 60, you're getting that newest set of hardware that's out, so you're not getting outdated equipment, which I believe is, is similar to what, like, any replacements they were getting were, were the older cameras that they had purchased originally, on, for the most part, I think. Same thing on the, on the in-car cameras. So you're getting the Fleet 3 today, if at month 60, because it's, it's tied to a power source, so it's a one, one refresh on that, if the Fleet 4 is out at that time, you get the Fleet 4. So you're getting that, not only the updated hardware, but like I mentioned earlier, the total cost of ownership of the package and the man-hour spent running the things is where the savings comes into play.
Okay, um, I guess what I'm after, I'm for this, however, I would like to know, we've got two different kinds of financial systems operating here. Is there an estimate on the net increase on average we're going to see year to year?
The net increase on average?
This would be personnel, this is equipment, this, you know, the whole business.
You know, you're kind of looking, we could go just body cam here, and like I said, obviously, we aren't paying anything for that year to year now, but we're also getting TASER, we're also getting ALPR function within the in-car system. In-car is another thing right now, unless we pay to replace the DVR, there's no suitable replacements, so we're not paying anything year to year when there were suitable replacements. For replacements, we are paying roughly $8,000 per car. So it's hard to quantify that as a total year to year cost, when for the last four years for body cam, we haven't been paying anything. But the thing to keep, not lose sight of, I guess, is that we're also including not only just body cam in this, but also TASER, some software modules, the storage alone, the unlimited storage, just not having to worry about replacing hard drives and all that. So I mean, I can get back to you with numbers as far as...
I, if I may interrupt, I don't think you can get back with exact numbers, because we are talking about apples and oranges here a little bit, but some rough idea of what this, including personnel costs, what, what sort of an increase we're looking at, I think would be helpful. And you can get back to me or get back to us at a later time on that. I don't think it's going to hold anything up, but I think it would be good to know.
Definitely. Yep, I can, I can do some numbers and run some numbers. And one thing I just would like to add in closing to that, to your question, too, is the reduction in man-hours is where we will save on this. Like I said, on our record staff, on our investigative personnel, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. It's called working smart. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe one lawsuit would save the cost of this, this, this request today, so I move to approve file number 22-369 as requested.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
You.
22-370 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to approve a resolution accepting a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the fiscal year 2022 Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Grant in the amount of $1 million.
Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you, this is great news. We finally have the grant agreement for the demolition of Harrison School. Community Development Director Doolin is here, and I think what I'd like to do is maybe ask him to walk through the timeline with everything, and, and really say, I'm sorry that we didn't bring the big check up, we should have brought it up tonight for a prop with us, but Director Doolin, if you could walk through that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Council. As the city manager said, this has been a, a long process, but we really want to thank Congressman Bustos' office, and specifically her staff as well, who, months ago, let us know that we are getting this funding that will definitely help us with the demolition of Harrison School and McKinley. This, this money is specifically for Harrison, but I think we don't want to lose the fact that we'll be demolishing both of those properties within the next seven months or so. So as the manager stated, in the council communication is the timeline, the second meeting in November, we will be bringing back to you an RFP that will have the overall price of the, all of the environmental abatement of both properties and the demolition of both properties. From there, the contractor will have about 30 days to mobilize on site, to get started, with the overall completion date of both sites completely abated and demolished by May 31, 2023. So I know it hasn't been the quickest process, this has been our kind of, really thankful of all of our staff that have worked on this, this has been a huge undertaking for them. Traditionally residential demolitions of houses are our expertise, not big commercial buildings, and we've had to do multiple rounds of environmental testing to get ready for this, and our, Matt Smith, our land manager, has done a fantastic job walking through this whole process, along with Ben Crocom, who's done the grant agreement with HUD. So there's just been a lot of layers to this project, and just very thankful to the staff that has worked on this. Thankful, within about seven months from now, we will have two properties that have been standing for a very long time, and we've heard lots of complaints about finally removed from our community. Just, just really thankful for Congressman Bustos' office for adding the additional funding to take these down, and happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment, I just wanted to thank the community development department and the staff for their hard work on this project. It's, well, it's a pleasant surprise, given two weeks ago, we were still wondering where the money was, where, when the check was coming, but it sounds like it's here. So having said that, I commend you on your work, and hopefully, maybe we can get the word out that we're still waiting for the check for that $2 million for sidewalks in 61605. So if we can wrap that up along with McKinley, then we're on our way to doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you very much.
We're going to have to get Congress to pass that bill first.
Right. Thank you.
So you, you made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. The discussion, and just a clarification, Manager, the million dollars from the Bustos City Site was for the demolition of Harrison?
It's directed for Harrison School demolition, that is correct.
Right, and for McKinley, it came from ARPA funds, isn't that correct?
That's correct. Well, the Harrison and McKinley are both going to be using ARPA funds.
Okay.
It's going to be expensive.
Oh, because it's going to be over a million? Okay.
Yes.
Got it. All right. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
22-371 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary for the property located at 7628 North Route 91, which includes properties located at 7618 North Route 91, 7708 North Route 91, 7716 North Route 91, 7806 North Route 91, and 7810 North Route 91, commonly known as Prairie
Mr. Manager.
Maybe if at this point in time, just to kind of frame up the discussion, I'll turn it over to our Corporation Council to just talk about this proposal as well. I believe that we do also have Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison here as well, who's in the back.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the zoning hearing on this had one of the adjacent property owners initially opposed, and that the proponent was able to work out an arrangement where they would install a fence along the property line, and that took care of the concerns of that property owner. Another property concession in the same facility, the same area was opposed, that was Furniture Row. They've withdrawn their objection, that was provided today in writing, I think. Alderman Allen was a direct recipient, I don't know if the rest of the council received this, but they're going to put a privacy fence on that side of the, of the establishment as well. In addition, through their counsel, Chris Oswald, they presented information from three different communities where this same operation manages other facilities identical to what they're proposing. Those facilities are in Bloomington, in Normal, and in Soggett, Illinois, down in the metro East St. Louis area, and all of those entities had their landlords provide affidavits that they haven't had increase in nuisance violations or calls for service or things of that nature at that, at that managed facility. So these cannabis operations at times do produce some issues. This management entity appears to be operating their facilities in a manner where they get along with their neighbors, as seen by their concessions that they were able to obtain from their immediate neighbors here, as well as the, at least, report from three different communities in our general vicinity where they're operating well without disruption to the other businesses in the area. And with that, staff reaffirms their recommendation to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I request, a few of our people part of the petition tonight to come to the floor, Corporation Hayes, I just have a quick question for you, and if you could provide some clarity. For the view in public that may, because we just approved a special use permit for another site just a couple weeks ago, and it may give the perception that we're getting bombarded with these right now, can you talk a little bit about, or just clarify my comments on the reason why it seems like we're getting onslaught of these, or just based off of how the state has now essentially unleashed the bottleneck that was the licenses when they were caught up in litigation over the last year or so, and now they're being unveiled finally, and now organizations have, I believe, within a year to find a place to set up shop?
So one large component of Illinois' legislation was a concept of social equity. The legislature undertook to attempt to inflect into the legislation opportunities for the populations that the criminalization of marijuana had disadvantaged over time. And so while they weren't able to make direct reparations to any of the folks involved in that, they tried to indirectly do so to make sure that the economic opportunities, which are quite substantial in this arena, were, were granted to people who might have been impacted or who were directly impacted by the criminalization. And so those social equity applicants come from disadvantaged areas and from disadvantaged backgrounds, and people of more limited economic status that normally wouldn't be able to participate, because the private interests with wealth would have absorbed all of the opportunity. So this is a social equity applicant for this facility. A number of those social equity applicants have finally gotten through to where the state is licensing those. Because of the nature of this, it's not like some of the earlier licensed opportunities where people had to have a site in order to get the state license. These are licensed without having a local site, and then, as you point out, they have a 180-day period to get one, and they can get that extended administratively through the state for that year period that you mentioned, in order to obtain approval for a site and, and perfect their ability to open up their business. And so this is one of those opportunities for someone who qualified through the state processes as a social equity applicant. I think it's particularly important to give consideration to all those ideas that the legislature tried to put in place, and the fits and starts you mentioned is part of the element that the Illinois legislature stepped forward into this arena with no precedent. And so there's been a lot of learning, and that's created some of these delays, and now this large group. Now, I think there's only four of those licenses in our arena right now that we're aware of, and two were licensed a while ago. right now that we're aware of. And two were licensed a while ago, and there hasn't been any activity. And then the other two that you're talking about, including the one tonight. And so we may see more of those because of the nature of this state license and now go find a site. And so it's hard for us to predict. I think staff would tell you it's impossible to predict how many we may see. And so I think I've answered your question. I don't know if you have any others, but I'm happy to address them if I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporation Hayes. That was a very detailed answer of just of where we are right now, as these are rolling out. Madam Mayor, I would like to request privilege of the floor to Chris Oswald of Miller Hall and Triggs, attorney for the petitioner, Justin Carey, VP of Real Estate, Jennifer Dewey, VP of Security, and Nick Ramirez, Director of Retail in Illinois. They can come to the microphone, please. Because I have some questions I would like to ask you all. Chris, I've been in communication with you, and Corporation Counsel Hayes talked about some of the concessions that the owner adhered to. Can you talk a little bit about those, a little bit of just, you know, how they worked with the neighbors? They worked with the various business owners as well, too, just to make sure that everyone is copacetic about the site?
Sure. Well, again, Chris Oswald, I know many of you, and certainly my firm's been up here, members of my firm have been up here on real estate matters and business matters in the past. And as you know, this is kind of a new time in history for all of us to go through this legalization of cannabis product. And we face sort of a traditional question here of whether or not a special use, notwithstanding the unique nature of the user, it's an old question about whether or not a site is appropriate for a special use. And so in that regard, we talk about the same kinds of things that we would talk about with just about any special use, and that is, you know, whether there's disputes with the neighbors, what can be done to alleviate that. And so we talked specifically to the owners next door to us on either side. The Peterson Hotel Group is on the one side, and they were present at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. I'd had an opportunity to speak with them beforehand, and they'd agreed that if we could put a fence up between the properties, particularly along their parking lot, they thought that that would be a good way to control the ingress and egress, which there really isn't any, between our two properties, to keep people from going between the two. Objections were raised by the Furniture Row ownership, who I didn't know at that time, but I did speak with their attorney, Jay Shoal, after that hearing. And we came to an accommodation that similarly, if we could put a privacy fence between the two properties, they would waive their objections just to sort of limit the idea that there'd be foot traffic between those vicinities. You know, this is technically a special use amendment application for a shopping center. If you're familiar with the property out there, you wouldn't necessarily say in looking at it that this was a shopping center. I know I was a little bit surprised when I first looked into this. This building's a standalone building. It's in between the Furniture Row and the hotel properties out there. It's serviced by the same access road, but it's a small structure backed up to Route 6. And so really, the primary neighbors that are of the primary concern are right next door to us, because in front of us is an access road, and behind us is the Route 6. Now, that being said, we want to be good neighbors to everybody, and we certainly can't convince somebody whose sole opposition is the legalization of cannabis that this is a good facility. And so, you know, unfortunately, there's not much we can do outside of the discussion here tonight about whether the site's appropriate. So that's essentially what we've been able to do with our neighbors, and certainly would invite any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald, for addressing and providing some context on the concessions that you all made to adhere to the neighbors in the area. I would like to invite Jennifer to the microphone to just talk about some of the security measures that exist in some of your current sites, but then also what you plan on doing with this particular site to ensure that there's no loitering, to ensure that there are no illegal access to these products by minors, to make sure that you maintain the current aesthetics of that area. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us out today, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. We are obviously required to follow the IDFPR regulations when it comes to our security of our cannabis facilities. In every location that we operate, we go beyond the minimum requirements of the state for those exact reasons that you just stated. Our company utilizes a licensed third-party security contractor here in Illinois. We require them to both patrol the inside and the outside of the property. We ensure that folks are not consuming cannabis on any of our sites. We ensure loitering is not occurring. When individuals come into our facilities, their IDs are checked, verified that they are, in fact, over the age of 21, if they are a recreational consumer. And we do not allow, you know, children or any youth inside of our facilities. If somebody comes in and they want to purchase something, and maybe, you know, they're a parent or something, those, they have to remain outside of the dispensary. We also work very closely with our local law enforcement partners. My background is in law enforcement. I worked in federal law enforcement for 17 years. I've worked in the cannabis industry now for seven years. So I have seen this industry evolve, and, you know, I'm very proud to say that the people that run security for my team were all prior law enforcement. We will partner with our local law enforcement agencies, making sure that if we have any suspected diversion or any crimes occurring on our property, we definitely relay that over to both the regulatory authority and law enforcement. But we're also viewed as a very strong partner in the community as well, because we will bring in 80 to 100 cameras within our facilities. And countless times, we have local agencies that come in and ask us for camera footage on something that, you know, happened outside of our property, but we just happen to be in a position to view it.
Thank you, Ms. Dewey, for answering those questions. It sounds like you all have a pretty tight security plan. I believe this particular location is ideal, given its density, the nature of the shopping center. I believe that you all have addressed the issues that were brought forth and made the appropriate concessions. So if approved tonight, I look forward to working with you all, working with the neighbors to ensure that we maintain that as a great place, that it currently is, and you all will be adding to the aesthetics of that. I would like to say, though, one of the reasons why I will be supporting this tonight is this, and I mentioned this on the council floor a few weeks ago, this particular application was in the queue before our policy session. And so I think it's very important as we're still trying to work through what we want our strategy to be when it comes to recreational marijuana. In the city of Peoria, I think we need to respect that they were already in the queue and not necessarily move the goal line, if you will, because we're trying to still figure out what we want our strategy to be. But they had already abided by the rules, and they were already in the process. So without further ado, I'd like to make a motion for approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Continued discussion. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few minutes back, we heard, we all appreciated what Keith Knapp and his team is trying to accomplish with regards to mental health issues in young adults. Mr. Manager, please correct me. How many did we approve till date? How many are in the process?
So there are two existing facilities in operation by the same company, and there are, we've approved three special uses so far that have just depend on the, on whether or not those applicants will get a license. This would be the fourth, my understanding.
So maybe we can say we have considerations about four to five till date, even though they may not be housed in Peoria, or maybe considering they'd stand in Peoria. On one side, we wanted to spend money to curb violence. We wanted to spend money to empower the society, and we wanted to spend money to give technology to the police. And the other side, we were trying to bring these facilities, you know, which could become an epicenter of crime and violence, you know. Building on our previous conversation relating to young minds, assume there's a patient with schizophrenia, or delusional disorder, or bipolar disorder, or even major depression. You know, these kind of situations will aggravate their lifestyle. And, you know, scientifically also, I would say that youth are more vulnerable to the neuronal effects of cannabis. And then continued exposure of cannabis is associated with a higher risk of violent behavior in the later adulthood. Although, we may, you know, we may argue that there is no empirical evidence. I strongly am against any situation that creates crime in our neighborhood. You know, as much as I appreciate the neighbors coming to present today here, I'm afraid I'm not going to support this endeavor in the city of Peoria. That's my stick. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You can have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm not opposed to recreational marijuana dispensaries, but I do have some concerns that we're considering this tonight when we haven't, as a council, finished our policy discussion and decided as a body whether we're going to implement further limitations than what we currently have. We have a public meeting, two public meetings scheduled next week to talk about it. And when we adopted the current regulations that we have, and a majority of the council did not want to adopt any limits as far as number of dispensaries or in the city or by council district, at that time, we were told that there could only be three licenses issued in the city of Peoria. So I'm not prepared to support or to approve another license until we finish our discussions and we decide as a body if we are going to adopt further limitations. I've mentioned on the council floor on numerous occasions, I do not want us to oversaturate the city with too many dispensaries. So it's not that I'm opposed to this site or this request, but I'm not going to support it at this time. I would support a deferral or a moratorium, as Councilman Grabb suggested the last time we discussed this. But I can't support this tonight because we haven't yet reached a decision on what, if any, further limitations we're going to adopt as a city council on these businesses. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As much as I like to support District Councilman on this one here, and I think my colleague, Mr. Allen, knows that I've always been a no. I am a believer in medical cannabis, but not in recreational cannabis. And I believe in what my colleague just said about, we should max out somewhere. And we do have a policy session coming very soon. So I don't know if I'd maybe make a motion to defer this for a couple of weeks, or even 30 days, until we're done with our policy session and reconvene at that time. So I'll move to, for this motion.
You're moving to defer. Is there a second? We've got a motion on the floor to approve. Council? Motion on the floor to approve. We have a motion to defer.
The motion to defer would be in order, Your Honor.
It would be in order?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You second? Continued discussion. Councilmember Euler?
I was just gonna comment that I do agree with Councilwoman Jensen's points here. My concern is I don't like changing the rules on people in the middle of the game, and they've already got the application in. So I have some reluctance to do any more after this without a policy session, but I, they already were in, in my opinion, and I don't think that we should change it midstream. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grabb?
On a motion to defer, can we discuss?
When the underlying motion is debatable, the motion to defer is debatable. So yes.
Well, I don't care how many more policy sessions you folks want to have. I've made up my mind, and I've told you weeks ago, everybody in this room and my constituents, that I feel we have a glut of these already. We have only two out of five that have been filled. We have one over in East Peoria. We sat here tonight, and we listened to a presentation about mental health that is badly needed, and mental health services for our people as it relates to adolescents, and we are continuing to set a very bad example. I couldn't even get a GoPuff delivery service at University Plaza because one particular councilperson thought it was possible that a Bradley student might be able to pick up some alcohol at that site. Unbelievable. This isn't even proportionate in scale. So, you know, my vote on this would be, if we have a motion to defer, out of collegiality, I will vote to defer. But I won't vote to support any more of these. And my constituents know that. And I've suggested that this council be about the business of establishing a moratorium on this. Garbage in, garbage out. We give information to our Planning and Zoning Commission, and they feel they have to say yes or no to these things. They can't think outside the box. Maybe we don't need any more, because we don't allow them to make that decision. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really am glad the council has made the decision to have a policy session to review this. And a discussion about a moratorium or a cap is something that certainly has come up, but we have not instituted that. And I think Councilman Euler hit the nail on the head, that it's just patently unfair to hold them to what we think our standard is. I mean, we need to be clear. If the council wants to make a moratorium, until we have more discussion at the policy session, we need to be clear about that. Councilman Grabb has been very clear, no doubt about that. He's made it clear. Councilman Seer's been very consistent in his opposition to any recreational cannabis, but the council has not made any policy shifts. And until we do, I think it would be extremely unfair for us to hold somebody to what could be our future standard. If after this, we want to entertain discussion at the next meeting about imposing a moratorium, that would be appropriate, in my opinion. But to hold these people to a standard that doesn't exist yet would not be fair. So I will not be supporting the deferral. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm torn on this issue very much, because first of all, as I think some of you might recall, I was not in favor of any recreational marijuana in the city at all. But I lost. We, those of us who were opposed, lost on that. And I've been kind of a stickler on things that I lose on, that we still have to follow the rules. I think it's ironic, ironic, and it's been, Councilman Velpula brought it up. We had a presentation tonight about the mental health of adolescents. It's been shown, as Councilman Velpula noted, that young men, not so much young women, but young men, under the age of 25, if they're chronic marijuana users, they have an arresting of their, of the evolution or of the development of their frontal lobes, which is their executive, their decision-making part of their brain. And if they, by the time you're 25, you're done. You can't bring back what was not developed. Puts me in a difficult place. Let's see what set of principles I really have here, you know. I'm kind of a stickler for the rules. And so I do agree that since we set up rules, even though I didn't vote for them, since we set up rules, and somebody has come here having followed those rules... having followed those rules, I don't know how I can oppose it. I do oppose this whole idea. The, I was hoping that we, hoping that in a, in a policy session, we'd go the other way, but I don't have any real expectation that that's going to happen. I think money talks, and the health of our young men is pushed aside. And I think that's pretty terrible. But these are the rules that we made, so I'll, I'll go for the deferral, but I don't like it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, I'm, I'm okay with the deferral because I think it gives us additional time to be able to find some information on, on the agenda that we have here. And I would, I would traditionally like to be able to support the deferral on this. And, and I think our policy session is going to be, as we continue those conversations, they're going to be very important about what the future of this looks like in the city. And, and I think that to have the public input is going to be important. And while I, while I also don't like changing some of those, you know, the, the rules as we have taken some applications, there may be times when that's needed as well. Because we may get an application for something not related to this, of some type of new business that we've not thought about before, so we might need to have a policy session or public input. But one of the things that I remember, I think clearly around this, this council chamber is, as we were talking about that policy session, that we talked about the fact that the applications that had already come in would be considered. And so I don't, I think that actually would be changing what we said here on the council floor. So as much as I would like to have, to support the deferral, to be able to have this maybe come after the, the policy session, I, I don't think I can on that. That does not minimize, though, what I think should come out of the policy session and what our go-forward should be about this subject on this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Because we are bringing up previous discussions, I was the councilman around this horseshoe several months ago that said we needed a strategy when it came to special use licenses for recreational marijuana. And so here we are several months later without a strategy, and now we're trying to hold up a business that has followed the rules, and now we want to get cold feet. And so, as I said, the reason why I support this particular business is because it has followed the current process that we have in place. Now, after this one, we can continue to have discussion to see what is our strategy around recreational marijuana in the city of Peoria. This body has to do a better job about being proactive. We're a very reactionary body. We were reactionary with short-term rentals. Now we're being reactionary when it comes to recreational marijuana. So I think it's very important that we're consistent and that we make sure that when entities are coming forth, that they are subject to the rules that are currently in place. And so that's why I will not be supporting the deferral tonight. I believe that we need to approve this site, and then from here, continue discussion about what does recreational marijuana look like in the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Grab?
After the last approval, I specifically stated I would approve no more. And I see what's happening here. It's not a matter of the council having a lack of strategy. It's you dragging all this other stuff in conveniently before we have a chance to have a policy session. I heard much the same thing on the last one. Now I'm hearing it again tonight. This would be number six in our city. So you guys are playing by some rulebook that all of us never signed on to. You can say there's some great scheme that we have established here, that we got to have a very serious discussion, policy session on this, and you just keep approving more and more. Some of you are going to approve all of them, no matter what. So I'm sorry if I question the sincerity of the concern about this council not having great deliberations about this whole matter. Because after the fifth one, I clearly stated that was it. And so now we have consternation about a deferral? Now we have number six tonight. I think, you know, even though I think it should be just voted down, I'm going to support the deferral. But you guys, you, you people are making things up. You're making things up, and you just keep approving one after the other, and, oh, we got to wait and have a policy session. I don't buy that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Point of order, calling for the question, please.
All right, we're going to call the question. The motion is to defer for 30 days. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with five nays. Ali, Allen, Euler, Reganbach, Ruck Regal. Madam Clerk? Hope I counted that right. Okay.
Twenty-two dash three seven two is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request for the following. A, to approve and accept the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Provision of Services to the Public from Named Line GRF Source from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to be submitted by October 28th, 2022 in the amount of $3 million. B, adopt an ordinance emitting the City of Peoria 2022-2023 Biennial Budget relating to the General Fund to recognize the receipt of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance providing the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Provision of Services to the public from Named Line GRF Source from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $3 million. And C, approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and Peoria County under the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Provision of Services to the public from Named Line GRF Source in the amount of $434,877.54, and we will need separate motions. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the $3 million DCO grant that we have previously discussed. That's money for violence prevention. You've already talked about nearly $1.7 million of it going to body cameras. The, as we discussed at the policy session on violence prevention, we're looking at breaking out this $3 million into additional license plate reader camera technology of $375,000, raising community awareness of public safety efforts, $375,000. Additional community violence prevention grants of $500,000. The $1.25 million of body worn cameras and in-car video cameras, and then $500,000 for workforce development and job training initiatives in the community. So it, if council approves that, obviously, a portion of this funding goes to cover the cost of body cameras and in-car video cameras for the sheriff's department, as was discussed in the item just a couple of moments ago.
Thank you, Manager. May I have a motion to approve? Moved by Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by Councilwoman Jackson. Discussion or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Oh, no, that's for item, item A. Okay. A second for Councilman Velpula. Cast your ballots for item B. Motion passes unanimously. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Please cast your ballots. Item C. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-two dash two nine three is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to defer until November 22nd, 2022, in ordinance emitting Article 19, Operation of a Cannabis Business of Chapter 18, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria.
Mr. Manager?
I believe that this is the, some of the policy changes that we are making towards cannabis, and we're just simply asking for the deferral of this until November 22nd so that we can have the, the public meetings next week.
Can I get a motion to defer? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. You had a question. I missed it.
Can you, I, I have one question. Is that going to, when the, the next policy session is on this, on November 22nd, will that give enough time for staff to come back with recommendations? Or is the plan, it says just to bring us back the input from the public meetings?
We should have enough time to come back to you with some recommendations that you can consider on the 22nd.
Okay. Thank you.
Please cast your ballots. And passes unanimously.
Twenty-two dash three three one is a communication from the city manager and chief diversity and inclusion officer with a request to withdraw an ordinance regarding the racial equity impact assessment.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We respectfully request to withdraw this item. We did put some additional information into the packet for you. There is the Minneapolis Racial Equity Impact Analysis, the Dubuque Racial Equity Toolkit, as well as an example of how the REIA works with a low-income housing program in the city of Chicago. I think what we'd like to do is just take some time this year. Both the chief diversity inclusion officer and I are working through a program that's been offered through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and the International City County Management Association that, that is really focused on these efforts. And I think what we'd like to do is just come back to you and show how this would work later in the year and just roll that back out to you. We do think that there would be some utility also to having some larger diversity, equity, inclusion training for not only the city staff, but through a policy session, we'd like to come back and talk to you about some of that as well. So with that, we would respectfully request to just withdraw this item at this time.
I have spoken with the co-chairs of the RJE Racial Justice and Equity Commission. I agree with the withdrawal for now. I think we need a greater understanding of what's been proposed, and we can do that in, in a bit more time. Can I get someone to move for withdrawal? Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any other discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, I will be abstaining from this vote based off of my employment with Peoria County. Thank you.
Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one extension. Allen? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three four eight is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to hold a discussion on the 2023 revised budget.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we do have in the packet, there is the first series of 13 report backs. What we'd like to do is just kind of quickly summarize those for you, and then if there's any questions or any additional discussion the council may have, we would be happy to, to discuss those and take those up. The first, Councilman Euler and, and Councilwoman Jensen had talked about the, the diversity and inclusion officer management analyst position, and as well the, the roles and responsibilities of the chief diversity and inclusion officer. I think prior to 2011, you know, we had an employment office, an EEO office, where we had a manager and two specialists in an administrative support position. They really managed the city's Fair Employment and Housing Commission, the mayor's advisory commission for the disabled. They served as our ADA coordinator. They provided contractor compliance and affirmative action reports. The EEO specialists at that time provided intake screening. They reviewed forms. They provided recommendations. Beginning in 2012, that department was folded into HR, and then in 2017, the EEO manager retired, and in 2018, we created the chief diversity and inclusion officer position. And so many of the same responsibilities that the EEO manager has, the, the chief diversity and inclusion officer currently has, but in addition, we added responsibilities such as working with city officials and regional leaders to focus on, in developing strategies that address racial disparity within Peoria and the Peoria region, to work with all of our partners in the Peoria Area Diversity and Employment Action Team, to also look at contract compliance monitoring for construction projects, continue the Fair Employment and Housing Commission, and mayor's advisory committee for the disabled, now being a, an ex officio kind of member of the Racial Justice and Equity Commission, and as well to put together those affirmative action and EEO reports that we need to have. In addition, the CDIO does provide supervision and oversight of the Peoria Core Program, which we've established and manages, you know, to try and bring and expose young adults to the, the green stormwater infrastructure as we're rolling out the work for that. That's an AmeriCorps program. So the management analyst position that we're looking at is really to help to provide some, some weight in the office and to provide some additional master's level support and analysis for that department, to not only look at, at how we're doing from a, a compliance monitoring standpoint, but also to look at that from a, an analysis of where are some factors as we move forward from trying to address racial equity that we can focus our efforts as a city and be more proactive and more, and more positive in those areas. Lastly, I think that, that the management analyst position has additional responsibilities that the state is dropping on us. The state has, has passed a requirement that we have to now provide to the state of Illinois, an analysis every year of how much we spend with minority firms outside of just construction, now across the entire organization. So there'll be additional compliance responsibilities that that position would have as well. So that was the, the first report back that we had was that. The second report back was a parking analysis. I think that this came from Councilman Seer, Councilwoman Jensen, and Councilman Grab. They wanted to know, we had, had mentioned that we were recommending parking rate increases. On page six in the report backs, there's a table that shows the parking rate increases that we're proposing as part of this budget. Most were recommending a $5 increase. We're not recommending a change to the hourly rates. The all-day rate would go from $6 to $10. One question that came up, and, and this is going to require more study, Councilman Grab mentioned, is there a way that we could look at free parking? Is there a way that we could look at, at the impact of maybe doing something differently to try and drive more business and commerce and activity downtown? And I think that we have some concerns from the staff's perspective about, about making our decks free, just simply because of the maintenance costs, and I know Director Powers is here in the audience, that we have there for, for maintaining our parking structures. But we do think that we could, we could certainly look at providing some additional study around our on-street parking to look at ways that we might be able to change that. We have a master services agreement with Terra Engineering, and we've talked with them. They have a parking division out of St. Louis. If with a little bit of additional cost, I think we can engage them in providing us a study that we can come back to you and with some recommendations, maybe about how we use technology differently. There are different ways to do parking enforcement. There's different ways that maybe we can look at things like that. Maybe there's different ways that we can look at the technology in our parking decks as well in order to let people know how many open spots are available and what we're looking at. So I think what we'd like to do is firm up an engagement and come back to you with a recommendation on that front that we might be able to address, kind of looking at, at the whole system at, at a pretty reasonable cost as well. The, the next couple of, of report backs, I'm going to turn it over to the finance director to take the lead on those, since I've been talking too much.
Report back number three was just a general question.
Report back number three was just a general question about how we define unrestricted fund balance. So I went through the Government Finance Officers Association, who define it is that governments maintain adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate current and future risks and to ensure stable tax rates. So really, when we're looking at unrestricted fund balance, it's an attempt to weather unexpected revenue changes or unexpected expenditures that may come along, is the definition that is, is being used in the industry in terms of unrestricted fund balance. Question number four from Councilman Ruckregel was about what is included in the City Hall 2024 capital project breakdown. Those projects include $530,000 for roof and copper work, $115,000 for elevator hydraulic pump and control upgrades, $125,000 for standstone tuck pointing repairs and replacement, and then $16,000 for domestic water piping replacement. Report back number five was about the amount of money that we have in the budget for lawsuit reservations, and that was asked by Councilman Ruckregel. Within the current 2023 revised budget, we have a, a little bit over $2 million for defense of existing cases. The city does carry liability insurance that has a $1 million self-insured corridor. That only applies to cases that occurred during the years in which we were insured. If there are cases that gets, get, go through the process next year, those will be brought back to council for budget amendments and changes based off the claims that, that we would have at that point. In terms of question number six, this was also brought by Councilman Ruckregel. This was an analysis of our sales tax by sick code. We were attempting to look at the concept of, we are in an environment right now of around eight percent inflation. Is the sales growth we're seeing more tied to inflationary costs, or is it tied to actual new spending? This was the best effort that we thought we could make based off the information that we had at that point. And I really think the areas that we've addressed is around seventy percent of all of our sales taxes in our larger sectors. And there is some interesting things, I think, to gleam from this as we've talked about the conversation last week. We've seen about an eleven percent decline in car sales this year. We've seen around a four percent decline in our department store sales and about a four percent decline in drugstores. So one could, could surmise from that that obviously they're not even keeping pace with inflationary costs. They're experiencing a decline, which might be a leading indicator of some struggles coming with potential recession. In terms of grocery store sales, I, I would lean and say to that at seven percent, that that more than likely is just keeping up with inflationary costs. And I'm sure anyone who's gone to the grocery store recently has noticed how much more expensive it is to buy groceries. And so that is more than likely just cannibalizing the inflationary costs. The couple areas that we have seen growth above inflation potentially is in eating places and miscellaneous retail, which is somewhat of a nebulous categorization that the state uses for some of its sick codes. But that is an area that we have seen growth above and beyond that eight percent inflationary rate that we've seen. Moving on to question number seven, this was wanting to extend, if you remember from the presentation last week, to council. We had the analysis run through 2027 in terms of what the fund balance would be at. This extends that to move the window out to 2030. The one area of note that I want to bring up in this analysis, looking at 2028, 2029, and 2030, is 2028 is the year in which the existing debt service for the Civic Center expires. The final payment is made in 2028, and that is around $7 million annually currently. So what you'll notice is if you look at the chart that was included in the report back, we start to see a decline in that spread between our revenues and expenditures in those out years, that we had a much larger spread in those years up to 2027. So that's just kind of the trend that we have going on. Obviously, in future years, there'll need to be adjustments made to these budgets, but that's the trend that we're seeing with the, the current budget. In terms of question number eight, this was a, another report back request from Councilman Ruckregel, and that was the interest rate assumptions that we are assuming, looking out kind of into the future the best that we can with what the Federal Reserve is currently contemplating. Most economists believe that the Fed funds rate will be around four and a half percent when the Fed stops its, its interest rate hikes. The assumptions that I use as part of this projection was looking at going back to a Fed funds rate closer to two percent. Obviously, for anyone who's been in the industry, we've been in a zero Fed funds rate pretty much since 2009 until recently. So the assumption and the hope is that we'll get closer to that traditional two percent Fed funds rate. But at the same time, it really just depends on going through the recession, how, how steep of a recession it is, and how long the Fed wants to continue to have easing of their policy during those time periods. Question number nine was a report back from Councilman Riggenbach that just lays out all of the detail for both the current expenditures for 2022, for our ARPA expenditures, and then lays out by category the amounts that we have laid out for 2023. Obviously, that might change based off some of the conversations tonight, but this was the plan that was brought to council in the August work, work session, and this is obviously something that can be discussed as we go through the process. Question number 10 was a report back from Councilman Riggenbach in looking at the garbage fund analysis. The good news, looking at the garbage fund, is we are looking at having surpluses in that fund equal to around $500,000 a year for both 2022 and 2023. That would put us on a trajectory to have this fund in balance within the next 10 years. And that obviously can change also with other factors, including what happens with landfill number two. I didn't know if you wanted me to take sidewalk participation or...
I think at this point, maybe we can ask Director Powers to come up and talk a little bit about the sidewalk participation issues and as well the Kickaboo Terrace Project.
Director Cranny was on a roll. I thought I was going to get to listen in there. The first one, the sidewalk participation funding. At the last meeting, I briefly went over what the challenges were that we encountered that led us to this meeting, the point of inequity that existed with the former sidewalk participation program, meaning a person's income or lack thereof created somewhat of a disenfranchisement or your ability to participate, quite frankly, where a sidewalk could terminate at a panel in a linear point based on someone's income and the ability. So that, along with the grander scheme of what we tried to do with sidewalks citywide, especially with the current economy and inflation, and I would say even hyperinflation to the point of materials and what we're dealing with, quite frankly, we couldn't get contractors to bid on a citywide contract where they were doing piecemeal work on sidewalks throughout the city. Their fuel, labor costs, so on were just prohibitive. Hence, we started looking at what should we do relative to sidewalks citywide. I will say in a nutshell, what we propose is shrinking the geography, looking at the conditions relative to the number of complaints we've had in that smaller geography and bidding those jobs in that smaller geography, and then rotate over a period of years until we cover the city. I would like to say by district, and it would be a five-year cycle, but I think that might even be too large, especially in the current economy with the level of investment that we have that we can make in sidewalks. So again, we want to look at complaints, conduct site visits, look at exactly what is in that area, and then select accordingly now. In the future, as we go into a more comprehensive asset management system, we would like to rate citywide the sidewalk network, all of our infrastructure basically, but in this specific point, grade and condition rate the sidewalk network period, and then begin to report back to you those conditions. And obviously, from our perspective, using an engineering analysis, we would say fix the worst first, but with your input. So that's where the program stands to date. And number 12 would be Kickaboo Terrace. We looked at the site basically, and it is indeed a bad condition road. It's a very small area. I believe the total project length linear was like 250 feet, if I'm not mistaken, or somewhere in that regard. We looked at various treatments and available funding and what we could get beneficial, some benefit out of this and taking this on in this fiscal year, in this coming fiscal year. Hence, we brought forward the permeable pavement idea because we are trying to get to that point of being green to begin with, moving through what we're doing with CSO and some of the other initiatives that we have in that area. We have the opportunity to take this small stretch of relatively light-traveled road, but in a very poor condition, and use that treatment and take advantage of some of the stormwater funding that we have as well, and get some measured results out of what we retain on that site or using that treatment in that site on that roadway. So that in, in a nutshell, is why we took that approach. And there is, I believe, a CIP sheet that, or you don't have that in the packet, I'm sorry, but we did create a CIP sheet for addition if adopted. So if you need that, we can add that to your packet as well. I believe that was it for me, correct? Yes.
Yeah. The, the final report back, and I probably should have put myself in front of Director Powers, was question number 13, which was a question from Councilman Ruckregel, wanting to compare the revenues, looking back at 2019 as a comparison for '22 and '23, and doing that on a high level. Our revenues for this coming year are up 35.8% over 2019, and they are up 25.9% for the 2023 budget. That is heavily influenced by the state, state revenues that we have seen. The other area that, just as a reminder to council, that also includes the increases that we've seen due to online sales taxes being remitted back to the city, and that has a large influence on this comparison as well. With that being said, we're available for any questions on the report backs or any other questions council wants to discuss.
Well, thank you for all the report backs and feedback from Council, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for these thorough reports. They're very helpful. I have some questions with regards to the, the first report back. I guess I'm a bit shocked. I don't remember the council ever approving the creation of a EEO office. We, I think a couple of years ago, maybe now four, created the position for, or the city manager created the position for the diversity and inclusion officer, but I was never, I don't remember any discussion about there actually being a department set up. And I'm also shocked to see that, that the duties of the diversity and inclusion officer include taking complaints, it looks like beyond the city of Peoria employees. It looks like they're taking housing discrimination complaints, and I wasn't aware of any of this, and I don't recall us having a discussion or authorizing any of that.
So Councilwoman, the, the EEO office was established prior to 2011. There, there were, there were...
Right.
There was an EEO director, and there were two management analyst positions in that, that department at that time. Beginning in the 2012 budget year, that department was folded into HR. In 2018, when we had the discussion about, about establishing the chief diversity and inclusion officer after the retirement of the previous incumbent, at that point in time, we said that that would be a department head-level position, reporting to the city manager in the organization. That was, that was what was discussed in 2018. With that, we gave the, the CDIO the responsibility of overseeing the Peoria Core Grant, providing some additional support and guidance to that function. And what we didn't have, we just had one position. So at that point in time, we had one position for the organization, which is what we have today that really operates. So, so what we're, we're asking in the budget for this year is to, to provide some additional staff support to be able to do the work that needs to be done in this area.
Okay. And I, I understand that, and I know the history. I was here when there was a EEO office, but that was eliminated in 2012, and all we did was create this one position. We never created a whole office to take complaints citywide on housing discrimination and...
Those were the responsibilities at that point in time when the position was created that were established for that. We did create an office for that position. It's on the third floor here at City Hall because we needed to, we needed to house that position. It was, when we, when it was approved by council, it was that this was a department head-level position.
I understand that, too.
You can't have, be a department head-level position without having a department. So we set it up as a department of, of diversity and inclusion or EEO. And that's, you know, when you look in the budget, we have that budget identified, and there's a portion of that spend in our, our general fund budget for that department.
Okay. And I, it just seems to me that this has been expanded much further than what was initially discussed and that we weren't, it wasn't communicated to us that that had happened.
Those were the same duties and those investigative responsibilities were the exact same responsibilities that the EEO manager had in, that was working out of the HR office.
Right. But that, we created this other position. I, I mean, we can go back and forth. I'm just, that, that, my understanding is that a lot of now, what you're asking for, I didn't even know that we authorized a department to do all those things. I thought it was limited to the city of Peoria and our employees, and if there were discrimination complaints from within the city of Peoria as an entity, that person would handle that, that person would review policies, that person would, you know, file the reports, look at how contractors were doing on city jobs, and even manage Peoria care. But some of these other things...
There's an inward and an external focus to the, to the position based upon the ordinances that we have. Your fair housing ordinance, there are housing complaints that can come in that may be directed through the legal department or may be directed through this office. They may be just taking it in at that point in time to see if there's something that we need to do. There could be issues of employment. That has always been in that based upon the ordinances that the council has adopted that this function had. It may not be a significant amount of time, but it is a function that was, has been established going back to when it was a standalone department.
Okay. But I guess that's where there seems to be, there's a diversion, I mean, there, there's a, that's how it was, but then when we created this position, we never had a discussion that we were going back to the old EEO office that would accept complaints from citizens all over the city.
And I'm happy to, to, to follow up and have a, an additional conversation with legal. There's some of that that's a compliance function that probably needs to be rested in the legal department versus being with, with the diversity and inclusion officer. And we could then look at focusing the efforts of the, of the diversity and inclusion officer on the, the, the needs that I think that we have as an organization for DEI efforts throughout the, this entire community and throughout this organization.
Okay. And I know I'm over my time. I have another question on this issue. One of the things that you mentioned in that's in the report back is that this person oversees or, or the new person would oversee the Peoria cares?
Peoria Core.
The Peoria Core. I noticed in the budget that, when we went through it two weeks ago, and this was a question I had meant to ask, that that fund is at zero and is at zero for the future, for the next budget year. So do we still have that program?
It's, it's funded through the Stormwater Utility Fund. There's a portion of it that's funded in the Stormwater Utility Program, so in the 801 Fund, in the Stormwater Utility Fund is where those dollars are.
So we still have a Peoria Core, and it's a group of...
We do. We have a cohort right now of, of individuals that are AmeriCorps volunteers that are working with the program right now.
Okay. And then I, I also have some questions on the report back on the sidewalks.
Director Powers, if you want to come back up?
Yeah. And this is good, whatever this plan is, but I don't want to see, we're, we're spending all this money to do repairs of the sidewalks in the proposed budget for 61605, which I'm not opposed to, but I also want to see us put some money towards the other older neighborhoods, at least, in the second district and the third district, the west bluff, the central bluff, the east bluff. Those sidewalks are in just as bad shape as those on the south side. And right now, while we have money, we're, you know, have a pretty healthy budget. We have AARP. have A A A R P money that we can use, and we've set aside for infrastructure. I would like to see that part of our budget. And if, then we have to increase it, I want a specific plan in there to also do sidewalk repairs in those older neighborhoods as well.
I think that the current plan, which is again, designed this year, taking into consideration complaints citywide, would take in the older neighborhoods that would have sidewalks likely in greater disrepair because they are likely older. So taking the complaints, if you will, the site visits citywide, we're trying to look at this point of equity period, just again, and we would, again, my presumption is because of the age, the sidewalk in the older neighborhoods, we will likely find those conditions more prevalent, hence a greater investment if you take our recommendation to condense the geography and get more sidewalk for the money. That is the current plan with the current budget without increasing the budget.
So, but I guess I specifically want a program and money set aside for those other older areas of the city.
I think that we can accommodate that. I think what we're saying is that we have, if we, if we're able to get the earmark for sidewalks in 61605, that we'll have 1.6 million next year, 800 from this year and 870 from next, that will be folded in to focus on sidewalks elsewhere.
Okay, I just, I don't want it to be, the can to be kicked down the road any further like we've always done with roads. I mean, this has been an issue since I've been on the council and long before I, Gary Sandberg used to bring it up every single year about how bad the sidewalks were in the second district, and they are, and they're bad in a lot of areas of the third, too. So, I mean, I'm going to keep advocating that I would like a specific amount set aside for those older neighborhoods as well.
I want to also point out that the earmark that you speak of has not been approved.
It has not yet been approved.
It's still pending, it has not gone through Congress, but it was cited by Representative Bustos specifically for 61605.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not approved yet.
Got it, thank you. Thank you. Sorry I went over.
All right, thank you, Director. Well, I've lost track here. Councilmember Grab?
The sidewalk discussion is a discussion I've already had with Director Powers. I was flabbergasted, quite frankly, to find out that an individual homeowner anywhere in the City of Peoria could not fix his or her sidewalk up in front of his or her house and curb, that somehow the policy trajectory had shifted to where you had to have a concentrated mass of people, as I think Director Powers just alluded to. I wasn't aware of that. When did that policy change, that Mr. Urich can't ask to pay a certain percentage for a new sidewalk and curb in front of his house? You just can't do it individually anymore?
I, as I think the Director had mentioned, the challenge has been one of getting contractors to be able to do that type of, of small job and the one-off work because of, of the challenges of cost and of mobilizing their workforce to be able to do that work. Director, do you want to explain that again?
That is correct, and it is not either or, it is both combined. The challenges of someone actually or a contractor actually buying the bid, if you will, or awarding in this market, we had twice failed to get that accomplished.
Okay, but-
Further research-
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
That doesn't mean our policy changed. What you're saying is we haven't succeeded in being able to find, I think you're saying this, a contractor to do a limited project in front of Mr. Urich's house.
Correct, citywide.
But that doesn't mean that we as a city have to tell our constituents who call, "Sorry, you can't do it unless you have a whole mass of people interested in doing it," correct?
Well, we don't want to set the expectation up that we're going to do it if we don't have the ability to get a contractor to do the work for us.
We could certainly say, if we can find a contractor, we'll be happy to participate in that. Now, that gets me to something else. Decorative lights. Okay, we always had a fraction, and we can go back to Councilman Sandberg and even probably before, we always had a policy on what the homeowner's part would be for a new sidewalk and curb in front of the house or a neighborhood that wanted ornamental lighting. So I have a neighborhood that wants to do ornamental lighting. Am I to be told, is the answer supposed to be, if everybody in the City of Peoria can't afford ornamental lighting, you can't afford to do it? We're not going to let you do it? Is this a socialist state now? Seriously, I mean, this is, this is also a matter of communication. Now, I did get a good answer for this particular neighborhood association, and I think this is policy, but I think everybody on the council needs to know, 50% plus one. But I didn't know that. Matter of fact, I thought it was 60%. For years, it was 60% for ornamental lighting. So I mean, I would just think we need better communication on these things.
So if I can, I guess I'll go to the last point first and then back to sidewalks, just because it's fresh on your mind. I think you crossed two points relative to 60% participation, meaning is 50% plus one from a neighborhood to do a special assessment in that neighborhood for ornamental lighting? The participation rate was never really completely locked by policy, meaning it was almost negotiable. And the last one that we had was actually 50%. It was formally used at 60%, meaning the 60% city, 40% by the neighborhood. That was a payment percentage, not a vote for whether they participated or not. So I wanted to clear that point, if that's what you were saying, Counselor, I'm not sure if that's what you were saying.
I'm just going back to the 90s. We always had a fraction-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
-for the homeowner versus how much the City of Peoria government taxpayers, the collective, would help foot. And you, you can see as you drive around the city, ornamental lighting projects, even in poor neighborhoods where we made a commitment. Look at how beautiful, probably you can't find lights much more elaborate than what we see down, down in the first district and the warehouse district. I just need to know what the rules are. That's what I'm saying, Manager. So what are the rules?
Well, what's happened over the last several years is that the, the demand by neighborhoods for ornamental lighting projects or for sidewalks has really dried up. We have not seen the requests from neighborhood associations. I'm trying to think, the last one may have been in Councilman Rigganbach's district, where we had a request for sidewalks in, in the third district. Might be, I'm talking, it might be the second district now.
But the pandemic's over, so that's why we need to get our act together now.
And it's, but it's, it's also a question, the policy question for the council is, is do you want to participate with neighborhood associations in these programs? Clearly, I think the answer is yes. The question of, we're not going out to neighborhoods, because this was, this was kind of the direction that we heard from council about this, was, was we're not going out to neighborhood associations and saying, "We've got a million six for sidewalks. We're going to set aside 400,000 of that for, for sidewalk participation. The remainder, we're going to come into your neighborhood and do a larger swath, and guess what, homeowner, you're going to have to pay 50% because we're going to tell you that this is the assessment that we're doing in your neighborhood." We've not done that because what we've heard from council over the years is, we should be paying for, the city should be paying generally, the larger we should be paying for sidewalks.
Manager, I, I've been here all this time. I've been here, the 10 years you've been the manager. When was that discussed? I must have been absent, and I'm rarely absent.
Well, we've, but we've, I mean, we've talked about, about sidewalks on road projects that we come forward with and doing complete streets, that the city would be picking up the tab for that. In other places, in other communities, as the city rolls out additional sidewalk improvements, there's participation from the ongoing neighborhoods. When you're building an entire stretch, let's say we were going to do Sheridan, for example, which we did, and we put sidewalks in on that stretch of Sheridan. You would require participation of the neighbors versus simply saying that the city is covering that.
Yes, and I don't want to appear to be critical or ungrateful, but, you know, when I get requests from homeowners about our ornamental or a neighborhood association about what our policy is, what contribution they have to make for ornamental lights, I need to know what the policy is. I think you've explained it. I appreciate it, but there's nothing like communication. And yes, Counselor Jensen, you're right. He sat right over there, I think where you are. And it was a big deal when we liberalized the allowance that we afforded the homeowner to do new sidewalks and curbs, and Councilman Sandberg felt it didn't matter how depressed a neighborhood was. If you can put new sidewalk and curb in front of several blocks of that neighborhood, you're going to bring that whole neighborhood up. It says, "We have not given up hope. We are still believing in this community." And he was a, he was a passionate advocate for infrastructure rebuild, and gosh, now we've got an infrastructure bill. Can you believe that? All these presidents have talked about doing it. We finally have an infrastructure bill now. And so I hope we make good use of it. I'm sure we will, I'm confident we will. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have asked for the timer to be put back up so we can move along, so please try to limit your comments to five minutes. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, just for a point of clarification here, you know, we in the first district is particularly on the south side, since I've been elected, I have asked for lights to be on in neighborhoods. We have streetlights that are out. I got calls today about streetlights that are out. We're not talking about ornamental lighting, we're talking about regular street lighting. So our needs down there, particularly on the south side, 61605, have gone unaddressed and unanswered for decades. That is why we have approached, had approached the Congresswoman for $2 million for sidewalks because our infrastructure is probably in the worst shape in the entire city. So I have to speak up for my constituents, some, many of which are older residents with detached garages, who've asked for alley lighting, alley lights for decades, and, and these needs still are not addressed. So I just don't want to see money that we've asked for, have been asking for, for street lighting, also for alley lighting in many neighborhoods now that are dark because we've got vacant lots all over the place. I don't want to see our money diverted when it becomes available to other neighborhoods because, once again, 6161, 61605 is not a priority. I'm not going to sit here and watch that happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question, one comment. Question, bond rating agencies, how often they come by to rate our, our books, and what's our rating right now?
So traditionally, they do come around mostly when you are going to be issuing new debt. They will on occasion do reratings based off of economic conditions. So during the pandemic, it wasn't, it was relatively common for rating agencies to reach out. We are currently, we have an, we have an A rating or, I always, we are an A2 with a stable outlook with Moody's.
Thank you for the answer. Comment? We have that discussion many times about the garbage. I'd love to see that fund. That's the only fund that we have that shows a negative. We have money right now. I know all the, all the details about that fund and being interest-free and all of that, but I think it'd be great while we have a solid balance sheet and going into some more difficult times in the next few years. It'd be nice to have a solid balance sheet so that if we have to borrow some money for whatever we would need in the near future, we have the highest rating possible and get the cheapest interest rate possible also. Just want to comment. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just offer a few comments on the request to add the staff member to the Diversity and Inclusion Department. Looking at how this role has evolved since its genesis in 2018 and additional responsibilities, and it is a department head position, I think it's very important that we are demonstrating our commitment to this work and we do allocate resources to it. Seeing the expectations of this role for one person is really inappropriate. Looking at the other staffing of the other different cities that were referenced on page three, we literally have one person that is expected to do all this work, and we're, we're expecting results. And if you're expecting to have stability in this role, you're going to have to have people who have help. You, you can't, you can't, you can't be a Swiss Army knife to everything with this work. This work is patient work, and it's work that takes time, but you definitely need the resources, you need help. And so I think our citizens want to see us committed to this work, and that commitment is our allocation of resources. And so I definitely believe that we need to add a, another person to it because what's going to happen is we're going to burn out our current person, and we're going to have a revolving door of this position. And so if we want to have stability in this office, if we want to have impact in this office, we've got to demonstrate that by allocating the proper resources. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Not to keep beating the same dead horse to death, but one of the advantages of being at large is not having to fight for resources in one specific district. And I do want to echo some of the comments that Councilman Grab and I have had the same constituent reach out to us every single year about sidewalks, and every single year we have to tell them we don't have any money for it. So there does have to be some amount of that that is well spread around. I understand that the needs are greater in the first district, but the first district also gets the lion's share of our budget when it comes to money year after year. But the unfortunate reality is, is the need is significantly greater, so it doesn't appear that way, but that is the reality when you add up the numbers. The other issue on this diversity addition, we've never discussed growing this into a department. We discussed creating this person with a set of responsibilities, and not one time have I ever heard that they're overworked, on the verge of burnout, can't handle the responsibilities. We want to grow this into an actual department, so I don't support that. I, I hear that in every other department in the city, but I am not hearing that here, so I can't support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess thank you for turning on the timer, but I think it was about me, wasn't it?
Not at all.
Mr. Manager, I would just like to urge you in your parking analysis to include our decks. I got the impression we were pretty much concentrating on street parking. Street parking is where visitors come to downtown for whatever services they want. Let's, let's include the decks as well where our, let's say, permanent employment are. Thank you. And also, I'm not sure I understood, Mr. Director, about, are we going to be handling lawsuits differently? Are we, we're going to be handling lawsuits the same way we have?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do I get a star for?
Councilmember Rigganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Piggybacking on that parking there from Councilman Kelly, I would just say, the idea of free on-street parking downtown is very intriguing, and I've always been opposed to, to, let me not give somebody a soundbite here. I think we need to be careful that we don't allow downtown workers to park on the street for free and take all the parking away from the potential people that we're trying to attract. So before the meeting, I was talking to the manager, and he was talking about some new technology and things that could be creative. So I would encourage you and Director Powers to explore that. that and see how you can regulate two-hour parking without meters. And then another thing that is continually an eyesore for those of us that work downtown is Fulton Plaza. And I just pulled up the budget sheet on that, and we have no money in the budget for that for the foreseeable future. And I'm not even talking about tearing it out, although that would probably be cheaper than repairing it. But it is really embarrassing to walk through there with people as you're going from my office, for instance, to the Civic Center, the Pier, or anywhere. I mean, there's grates that have fallen out. It's just, it needs to be cleaned up, in my humble opinion. And I would really like to see something before the future, that we could see something there. And, you know, that should be such a grand gateway from the Civic Center to the museum, that we really encourage people to make that trek. And I think the connection could be so impressive, but that, the way it is now, I try to avoid that when I have clients and I'm walking to restaurants. So hopefully we can be creative in future years to make that a priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just a request for the city manager to see if, how quick we can get the report back on the GPEDC, because that report is already available for the public. That was displayed to the public on that day. I don't know what is holding them to give a report back.
I will reach back out to their CEO and ask them.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Councilwoman Jackson's statement. I'm not suggesting that we take any of the money from what's already been earmarked for the First District. I'm suggesting, since we have a healthy budget, we're not in the red, that we also put some funding towards the other older parts of the city for sidewalks. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And I support, too, interested in looking at what free on-street parking would be downtown. I think that is more of the direction I'd like to go than having free parking in all the garages. And I had one more question, but I don't recall what it is, so I'll ask later on my own. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
Well, three items. First of all, I remember when we had a First District Council person who wanted virtually all the roof replacement money for her district. All of And of course, the answer coming from my constituents was, "It rains all over Peoria." Darkness is darkness all over Peoria. And we talk about the lighting issue, and Director Powers, you and I, manager, for many years have tried to figure out how much of the darkness is responsibility of our beloved Ameren, not taking care of their responsibility versus the city. And there is a difference. And believe me, when I travel all over, I do exactly what Councilwoman Jackson does. When I see dark spots, even in another council member's district, because I still haven't taken off my at-large hat, I turn it in. And I believe I mentioned to you some very lengthy, large span of road down in what's your district now, District 3, along Adams Street, as you go on down toward Alexander Steakhouse. There's huge dark spots, McClure. I travel down, South Side. It doesn't matter where I go. It can be the Fourth District, it can be the Fifth District. So we have to realize lighting isn't entirely a city responsibility or a city-funded thing, that Ameren, when we pay our Ameren bills, has a responsibility in this, too. And that includes alley lighting. That includes alley lighting. And we know what the regulations have been and where they have not fulfilled their responsibilities. The other aspect that I think is important is the diversity aspect. All right? I said it before, and I'll say it again. I mean, I'm going to bore you people. If we really are committed to diversity, if we are, it should be a city of Peoria corporate priority that transcends all of our departments. You don't need a separate department. Now, I know I've heard the response, "Well, if everybody's responsible, nobody's responsible." Well, how can that be? You have a police superintendent. You have a fire chief. You have a public works. They're already addressing some of the diversity issues. When we award contracts, we're doing that. I think the old-fashioned approach is what we're suggesting here, that we have a whole other department that does this, when the whole idea of this should be suffused throughout the entire city culture. And to the extent that we're not doing that, you know, we can continue to have a department that does. Had a standalone department, but she'll never be that effective, as if you would have each department head, as they're doing now, focus on promoting diversity. As they are doing now, everybody's responsible. Why just two or three people? How many people work for the city? We have hundreds of people working for the city. We pay department heads, well, maybe not as much as they should, but we pay them, and they're supposed to be keeping track of this. I just think we're going backwards, trying to create a whole different department and not put the responsibility completely and fully and squarely on every department head who works for the people of Peoria, just as we do. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have to respond to that and say that everybody doesn't fully know how to manage diversity, and that having a champion or who has expertise and extensive training in this area helps those various departments to understand how to lead in diversity. So you have to have that champion. That's what's happening in progressive organizations. They have a leader Bradley just hired, a Vice President of DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. That's what many organizations around the nation are doing, including government organizations. They have that leader. But many establish an office or a department of DEI, and it really helps in making the organization stronger. And it does help ultimately with the bottom line. I've been in the field for a long, long time, at Bradley University, at Illinois Central College. It's an area of need, and we have to recognize that need as leaders. I think we need greater understanding. Sometimes we have training that we provide to police officers, to firefighters, to staff, but I think we have to accept training ourselves to expand our understanding of this sensitive issue called diversity. And, you know, we can't assume that we know it all, because we don't. I learn something new in diversity every day. So I just want us to be open as leaders to this thing called diversity, because it's going to make us stronger. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to clarify the discussion on Fulton Plaza. I thought with the two-way conversion and stuff, there was somewhere in here, there was money planned to take it out, and that was why we moved the Washington bust.
It is eventually planned. Let me find it here for you. It is on Page 66 in the Capitol Budget Presentation. It's listed as future expenses. We've got some of the funding for it. It's been out there. Part of the reason is, we don't have the full amount to do everything with it, and we've been trying to apply for grants. We were not successful in this past year to get a grant to do Fulton Plaza. And the other piece is, we're trying to balance all the needs that we have. So should we have enough TIF funds? That is, it's inside the TIF district. We should be able to maybe look at that in the future and accelerate that forward and bring it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no other lights, can I get a motion to receive and file, moved by Council... Oh, you have, okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize. I remembered my question, or I guess I would like a report back. It's my understanding that the Transportation Commission has made some recommendations with regards to what we should do with some of the infrastructure money, and we should be getting a report on that. So could we get that before our next budget meeting?
You'll have it for the next budget meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Moved by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilmember Velpula, to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
A new business item. I would like to ask Ms. Stacy Peterson to come up and tell us about these public hearings on cannabis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is a very timely announcement that I'm going to make tonight, because it's about our upcoming cannabis recreation input meetings that we have scheduled. Following our October 11th policy session, which was hosted by Deputy Corporation Counsel Chrissy Kaposka, you brought up four issues that you wanted more information and input on. We have scheduled two public meetings for next week. One will be Wednesday, November 2, at 6:00 p.m. here in City Hall. It'll last approximately an hour. We're going to record that. It'll be hosted on our YouTube channel, once that's recorded. Then we're going to host a virtual session the next day, at November 3, from noon until 1:00. So we're trying to cover bases, so people can attend either virtual or in-person, both being recorded. On top of that, we're going to open up a survey later this week. It's going to be a short-format survey on Survey Monkey. I'll be sharing all of this information in a press release, hopefully tomorrow. We're going to have some adjustments to make after tonight's discussion, and that should be open for a couple of weeks. The survey, as it's designed, takes about five minutes to take. We're hoping for some robust input on that, so we can turn around and give you the recommendations and more information from our public.
Thank you for taking that on.
You're welcome.
Other new business, Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Based on our earlier discussion surrounding the cannabis situation, I would suggest that the manager come to us next, at the next regular scheduled meeting with a moratorium, with the one application that's pending, being not included in that, of course. But we talk about it, but we never make any action. So if we're serious, if those that think we need a moratorium aren't willing to do it, I'll throw it out there so we can at least have that discussion and see what the will of the council is, and have a moratorium on any new approvals pending further action by the council. Like I said, I would not want the one that was just deferred included in that, but going forward, that way we'll make sure there's not a number seven, Councilman. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my announcement is on a little different side, a little lighter side, and hopefully I can get this right without saying this wrong. Friday is City Hall, a wean versus Halloween, from 3:30 to 5:00. And we invite everybody of all ages to come down, trick-or-treat. Each of the departments is going to be involved in it. It's going to be a lot of fun. And then transitioning after 5:00, down to our Police Department, they are going to be having trick-or-treating at the police station from 5:00 to 7:00. So two great events that you can hit, from one directly to the other. You'll be able to kind of tour City Hall, this great building here. You'll be able to go down to the police station, be able to see a lot of activities, get a lot of candy, and just have a lot of good time.
Thank you. Come on out, kids. Member Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And definitely on a lighter notice, well, too, I'd like to congratulate the Yanni Collective for another successful, too sophisticated, too ratchet art affair that occurred this past Saturday at Premier Events Center. It was a great celebration of art, fashion, a lot of local vendors. People came from St. Louis, Chicago. It was just a great, great celebration of culture. And just to see the art scene and the culture scene of Peoria just really expanding between what they're doing, what Big Picture's doing, what art partners are doing. I mean, Peoria is really becoming a hub for art and culture. And we see that the data is demonstrating that those cities that have this are really thriving, and the economic opportunities really translate to those cities that are these hubs for art, culture, fashion. And so I'm very excited to see where Peoria takes this, but I definitely just wanted to give them a quick shout-out, because the last several days have been pretty negative in Peoria with some homicides and things of that nature. But that was a very positive event, and I just wanted to say, I appreciate them doing those quality-of-life opportunities for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We are at Citizens Opportunity to Address the City Council. I have three cards, if you're still here. First one is Kimberly Stannard. Oh, right there. To the stand. Is, do I have a card for him? Okay, is Kimberly Stannard here?
Mayor, that was one of the folks in favor of the campus, or speaking on behalf of the Congress.
Thank you. Is that the same with Nicholas Ramirez?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the same with Justin Carey?
Yes.
Oh, you can come to the microphone. Just tell us who you are.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is John Sims. I am representing Empire Lounge. And on a couple occasions after submitting for my site approval, Councilwoman Jackson, I tried to contact your office. No one called me back, so I assumed everything was okay, and I've been a little busy. But you have obviously some sort of issue with the approval. I hope to find that out. But I'd like to say beforehand that I might have had a first-time application error, because there's a part in there that asks what percentage of food will I sell from the location. And I believe I put the minimum, which was 25%. And that might have been misleading, because the fact of the matter is, I'm the current owner of Jerkhead Caribbean Cuisine in Campus Town, 1200 West Main Street, 21A. And the whole point to me moving and incorporating the lounge is around the restaurant itself. So I definitely would think that my food sales should be a lot higher than what I indicated on that application. This is not a club. It's a social lounge with, like, real leather furniture and stuff like that. I guess at this point, I would probably need to know what your issue is with the approval of the location is, so maybe I can address it tonight.
So it's not a two-way conversation for this. You can set up, you can make your comments now, Mr. Sims.
Okay.
And then if you want to follow up and meet with Councilmember Jackson, you can do that. But we can hear from you now, but we just don't have the open discussion back and forth.
Okay. I apologize, Madam Mayor.
Quite all right.
Thank you. I'll just leave it there then.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
We do not have an executive session, so we are at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Allen and Euler? Okay. Thank you for your service.